Good evening and welcome to the November seventh meeting of the Falmouth zoning Board of Appeals. We'll be calling the meeting to order and also ask everyone to please silence their cellphones at this time. I'll introduce the board, starting to my right, your left. To my immediate right is Ken Foreman, who is our Vice Chairman of the Board. My name is T.J. Hurry, I'm the Chairman of the Board. To my left is Ed Van Kuren, who is a full voting member, followed by Bob Dugan, who is the Board's Clerk, and Mary Berry, who is an associate member. Also with us tonight is Noreen Stockman, who is the Zoning Administrator, and Ashley DeMello, who is the Recording Secretary for tonight. The Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying the zoning bylaws for the town and considers requests for special permits, variances, and appeals as provided in the bylaws, which have been approved by Town Meeting and the Attorney General's Office for the Commonwealth. All decisions that the Board makes are made through the public hearing process. The Board's goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public, and also to allow full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the Clerk will read the public announcement of the hearing and then present any pertinent information from the files, such as referrals from Town Departments and correspondences to and from the Board. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have fifteen minutes to make a presentation, and then time may be extended by vote of the Board. The Board will then question the applicant, and the public will be invited to comment as well. Public comments should be directed only at the project itself, and we also ask that you please refrain from making any personal or derogatory statements. But such public comment could include an opinion in favor or in opposition, or it just might simply be a question about the nature of the project. The Chair will limit discussion in the interest of time if comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak or wait to be recognized by the Chair come to the podium to the right here, your left. And we also ask that you please state your name and address for the record. And we typically limit public comment to two minutes per person. As for closing or continuing a hearing, when the Board is satisfied that enough information has been presented by testimony and in the file to make a decision, by motion and vote of the Board, the hearing will be closed. In the alternative, the Board may continue the hearing to a future date and time. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. With any Board discussion and decision, the Board may then further discuss the project among ourselves and make a motion to either approve or deny what be made and voted upon. A motion will include a summary of key findings and conditions. An affirmative vote of four members, which is a supermajority, is required for approvals of motions on special permits, variances, and appeals. A split vote, such as a three to two vote, is a failure to carry and would result in denial of the project. Under Massachusetts general law, if a special permit is denied, the applicant cannot return to the Board for two years unless the project is substantially different than previously proposed. So turning to the agenda for tonight, we have public comment, we have three continuations, we have four new hearings, and we have items on our open meeting list. So to start with public comment, this public comment is meant for anyone that wishes to speak about anything that's not on tonight's agenda. So with that having been said, is there anyone out there that wishes to take the podium for anything not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none. Moving along. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I would move that, are we talking about, I'm sorry, make a motion with respect to what?
I was anticipating taking the new hearings out of order, my apologies.
Okay, so then I'll make a motion to take the new hearings out of order?
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Bob and second by Ed, all those in favor?
Aye.
So we will start with application sixty-four dash nineteen, Greeley, twenty-nine Hudson Street in Falmouth.
And we'll need to appoint.
And yes, so we have, there's the four of us, and we'll be appointing Mary as a voting member on this.
So application number six-four dash nineteen, the list of abutters is on prior at the Office of the Board of Appeals Town Hall, being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section eleven of Chapter forty-eight of the Mass General Laws, you are hereby notified that Carol J., of Falmouth, Mass, has applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections two forty-three C and two forty-sixty-nine of the Code of Falmouth to remove the existing deck and construct in addition to the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on subject property known as twenty-nine Hudson Street, Falmouth. For referrals, concom, no comment. Engineering. The application was reviewed only for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Hudson Street is a public right-of-way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right-of-way. Any changes within the right-of-way would require filing a permit with the Engineering Division. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate Town Department. The project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property or abutters or rights-of-way. While the applicant does not propose changes to the driveway within the right-of-way, the relocation of the existing driveway as shown would require a driveway permit. We request that the Board either require the applicant to obtain an approved driveway permit from the Engineering Division prior to closing the hearing for this special permit, or that the Board include the following condition if the special permit is approved. The applicant shall obtain an approved driveway permit and post any required bond with the Engineering Division prior to the start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work as approved by the Engineering Division in the driveway permit. Note, plans do not show enough information to approve a driveway permit. Additional grading information and stormwater mitigation information will be required. Stormwater runoff from the relocated driveway will not be accepted in the street. It will be required to be contained on-site. We recommend that the plans be revised to include a demarcated limit of work and include erosion and sediment controls as required to protect Hudson Street right-of-way, town stormwater system, and the abutting properties. We recommend the Board condition the addition of drywells, rain garden, or other stormwater measures. We also recommend the following condition for any approval. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for the residence per Section ninety-nine dash one, affixing illegible numbers required, and there's a time limit for compliance. Assessors, no comment. Planning, no comment. There's an email from Amy Lowell, wastewater superintendent. This property is in the LPSSA and is connected to sewer. It has a grinder pump. Comparing the proposed plan and the sewer as-built, it appears that the pump will not need to be relocated, but it will need to be protected during construction. So no new sewer connection modification permit will be required. It also appears that the house will have three bedrooms when complete, so the flow-neutral bylaw is not triggered and no variance needed. Fire department, no comment. There are some lot coverage calculations in the file, if anybody wants to see them.
And is that it?
That's it.
Okay, and for the applicant tonight, Greg Jones, architect for the owners, Carolyn John-Greeley. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The proposal here is to add a modest addition to the front portion of the house of five feet to the front and about, I believe, seven feet to the side. We're still well within zoning setbacks, both on side lot and front yard setbacks. The reason we're here is currently the property is at twenty-four point two percent lot coverage, I believe. It's shown on Homes McGrath's site plan here. So any addition we do to that will trigger the need to come before you for a special permit for increasing or changes to an existing non-conforming structure because we're in a twenty percent lot coverage area. I will note that part of the project, in addition to the modest addition on the front and side, will be removing a large wooden deck in the back of the structure so that should the Board grant us the special permit that we're seeking, the overall lot coverage will actually decrease by virtue of this project by two percent. So as the property stands today, we're at twenty-four point two percent lot coverage. Should the project move forward, we'll end up being at about twenty-two point four, I believe. Those numbers are on the site plan, but we're losing our two percent of lot coverage. This is the front of the property as it stands today. This gable at the end, we're proposing to pull forward by five feet and then fill in this sort of corner piece with the side addition. It will provide the owners with a small additional bedroom, which will bring their bedroom count up to three. The front elevation is proposed to look like this, not unlike it looks today. I'm sorry, I have trouble seeing without my glasses. So a small home office bedroom in the front corner, a new set of stairs down to the basement, and they're enlarging their current master bedroom by the five foot in the front. It looks, as I say, it'll look a lot like it does today when it's finished. And in the end, we'll be actually reducing the lot coverage by removing the large wooden deck in the rear. I'm happy to answer any questions anybody might have. Thank you. Mary, any questions?
Not at this time.
Bob?
No questions.
No questions.
Nope.
Pretty straightforward.
Right, it's not every day you see lot coverage coming down for those usually going up. So we'll turn to members of the public, any questions, comments, concerns regarding this project tonight? Seeing none, back to the Board.
Motion to close.
Okay, motion to close by Ken and second by Ed, all those in favor?
Aye.
And what would be the pleasure of the Board?
A motion to approve.
Seconded. Motion approved by Bob and second by Ed, findings?
Subject property is on the LPSSA, has the three bedrooms remaining at three. Meets two forty-three C, two forty-sixty-nine, two forty-two sixteen, not substantially more detrimental. There is a reduction of the existing coverage from twenty-four point two percent to twenty-two point two. Is also a reduction in the driveway that's proposed that reduces the lot coverage by structure parking and paving from thirty-six point seven to thirty-four point three. There were comments from Engineering that they would like certain clauses put in regarding stormwater runoff and driveway issues. They would also like the numbers marked as in ninety-nine dash one.
All right, anything else for findings?
They will be removing the rear deck to the property. And that's what's allowing them to decrease in lot coverage.
And the only non-conformity is lot coverage, right?
Yep, it's lot coverage.
Although they're expanding the footprint, I guess they're still within sideline setbacks.
Yep.
Yeah, anything else?
I'm sure if you're interested in that.
Yep. Anything else? Conditions?
They need to protect the grinder box during construction, per plans. I'd like to condition both, actually all three recommendations from Engineering. One regarding the driveway permit, one regarding stormwater runoff, and the other regarding that ninety-nine dash one, where legible numbers required.
Could we add the needing of the grading information?
Yep. Oh, and so, yeah. And also to have the plans revised to include a demarcated limit of work, which will include erosion and sediment controls as required to protect Hudson Street right-of-way, town stormwater system, and the abutting properties. Since the property is on the LPSSA, we may want to add to the findings that the flow-neutral bylaw is not triggered.
All right.
And also, I think we should add the findings that bulk calculations were submitted.
I think they're allowed up to zip four bedrooms in the LPSSA.
They're allowed up to four bedrooms, if I'm right.
Okay, anything else? All right, so motion to approve was made by Bob and second by Ed, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ananamous. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, up next we have application sixty-eight dash nineteen, Fuss.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just in case anyone's here for, under the open meeting section, we have a Board Administrative Review for one eighteen dash eighteen Blue Flag Development. And they've asked for continuance to reschedule, they want to finish with the planning board first.
Okay.
So if anybody's waiting for Blue Flag Development, they won't be heard tonight.
Is that a, is that a PSA, do you want to take it out of order and give them another date?
No, they're gonna, they're gonna wait us now.
No, it's just administrative, so they'll come back.
We may also want to take Doherty out of order just because the sixty-five dash nineteen Doherty, three forty Nathan Ellis Highway, they have submitted a request to withdraw their application. So we may want to take that out of order just to accept the withdrawal.
All right, so is there a second on that?
Second.
All right, motion to take that out of order by Bob and second by Ed, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then motion, then motion to accept the withdrawal of the application.
Application sixty-five dash nineteen.
Sixty-five dash nineteen Doherty, and it is upon the applicant's request.
All right, and we'll have to make motion for that, so.
So motion to accept the withdrawal on applicant's request of sixty-five dash nineteen Doherty, three forty Nathan Ellis Highway, Hatchwell.
Second.
All right, I'll give that to Ken, so motion, it was close. So the motion was made by Bob and second by Ken, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now coming back to application sixty-eight dash nineteen, Fuss, forty-one Brushhill Circle in West Falmouth.
So being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section eleven of Chapter forty-eight of the Mass General Laws, application number sixty-eight dash nineteen, Michael H. and Nancy Fuss of West Falmouth, Mass, have applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections two forty-three eight G one of the Code of Falmouth to allow a thirty-by-forty-five metal garage on subject property known as forty-one Brushhill Circle, West Falmouth, Mass. Engineering, the general referrals regarding stormwater runoff, drywells, rain garden, or stormwater measures. Assessors, no comment. Fire Department, no comment. Engineering, actually health, they don't have any issues because there's no plumbing involved. Planning, no comment. There is a there is a letter in the file from an abutter. Mary Kane and Vincent Mayette, this was to the administrator, Dear Miss Stockman, my husband and I, Vincent Mayette and Mary Kane, live at thirty-five Brushhill Circle, East Falmouth, Mass, on the property that abuts Mike and Nancy Fuss's property at forty-one. We cannot attend the meeting on November seventh, but we spoke with Mr. Fuss, who has agreed to plant a row of arborvitae for privacy along the property line between our houses as a term of our approval of his plan to build a thirty-by-forty-five-foot metal garage on his property. And there is there is a notation here regarding Rod Palmer that he suggested a provision approximately one foot for slab foundation added to the height. I don't know, Noreen, do you know what that's regarding?
Yes, so just in having a conversation with the Building Commissioner regarding this petition, we were discussing the height of the structure, and I think the plans from the company reflected the height of the structure, but not to include a foundation. So Mr. Palmer's suggestion was approximately a foot.
They just add a foot to the
And for the applicant tonight?
I'm Mike Fuss, it's pronounced Fuss.
Oh, my apologies.
Spelled Fuss, I'm used to it.
And I'm Ron Welch, I'm a general contractor.
You'd like to tell us about your project, or?
Yes, it's a metal building that I that I ordered when I realized how much less expensive that it was than a wooden building, and we made the plans for it before I realized that it was too large for zoning. But it fits the yard well, it doesn't take near the twenty percent, and it fits within the offsets of the boundaries. And all my, all my neighbors are in favor of it. And it's going to be barn red, so it doesn't look industrial. And the main motivation for this is I inherited my father's classic Cadillac. I want to keep that in it along with other, a couple other classic vehicles I have.
All right, anything else? All right, we'll turn it to Board Questions if we have any. Ken, do you want to start us off?
So is this your resident?
Yes.
Okay, I guess that's my only, that's my only question.
All right. Ed, anything?
Yeah, just a question on sheet A one, which shows a nine foot by eight foot door for both of them. One of them is fourteen feet tall, right?
No, yeah, one is a larger door, and it was, I think accidentally put in the same size.
Just need to fix the drawing.
One's a large, one's a large door because I hope to get a camper someday. I work at Major's RV, and one of these days I want to bring a home camper and put it in the garage.
Okay, just need to fix the drawing that shows the
Yeah, we can do that.
No big deal.
Yeah.
No, that's all I have.
All right, Bob?
Just to, so just to confirm, so we've got a ridge height of eighteen feet six inches? Is that correct, without the additional foundation?
Yeah.
That's the only question I have.
Mary?
No questions.
And I think you might have heard the abutters letter that was dragging to the record, so you're agreeing to install arborvitae?
Oh, sure.
Okay. Would you like to hear that?
Glad to, I was thinking of a good way to make a nice natural border there anyway. And I think the abutter on the other side wrote a letter also.
And under the bylaw that you applied for, it allows for a garage space for more than two cars if the lot is three thousand square feet or less. three thousand square feet or less, or, and then there's more language about the footprint of the garage being more than nine hundred square feet or fifty percent of the footprint of the principal structure. Do you know which one you fall under?
Say that again?
So it's just the language of the bylaw? Is it that the, the lot is less than three, I'm, I'm sorry, thirty thousand square feet? Or is the footprint of the garage more than nine hundred?
Footprint of the garage is more than nine hundred.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? All right, any members of the public have any questions, comments, concerns regarding this project tonight? Seeing none, back to the board.
Motion to close.
Second.
Okay, motion to close by Bob and second by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I should note that Mary's a voting member on this project as well due to the numbers tonight. And how would we like to proceed?
Uh, motion to approve.
That's Bob and Ed again, motion to approve. Findings?
Uh, meets two forty dash thirty-eight G one, uh, two forty dash two sixteen. Per abutter's letter. Let's get the address. Per abutter's letter at forty-one Brushhill Circle, the applicant has agreed to plant a row of arborvitae for privacy along the line between those houses. The the lot coverage by structures is only eleven point four-two. Instructions, park and paving, twenty-five point nine-three. They will need to do stormwater measures for any additional runoff from the garage. I mean, the garage is being put in place for storage for antique cars. So that increases the utilization of the property meets two forty dash two sixteen.
All right, and conditions?
Actually, on, on findings, we should also put in there that the plans show eighteen feet six inches. But because they didn't call for the additional for the slab foundation, it will actually be nineteen, nineteen feet six inches with the foundation.
Okay. Should include some language about the building commissioner's letter, then?
Yeah. Uh, as far as conditions, per plans, meet engineering comments regarding stormwater runoff. Planting of the privacy row of arborvitae between their property and forty-one Brushhill Circle. Well, I think that's it.
Okay. Well, the motion approved was made by Bob and second by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ananamous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, up next we have application sixty-six dash nineteen, McGordy, ten Cypress Street in T-Tick.
And did you appoint Mary for the?
Mary, yep, Mary will be appointed for this as well.
Application number sixty-six dash nineteen, being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under section eleven of chapter forty-eight of the Mass General Laws, you are hereby notified that Michael J. McGordy of Braintree, Mass, has applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty dash three C and two forty dash sixty-nine E of the Code of Falmouth to raise and reconstruct the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on subject property known as ten Cypress Street, T-Tick in Mass. For referrals. Uh, Concom has approval under an RDA, so there's attachment here, request for determination of applicability, RDA, October sixteen, twenty nineteen. Mike McGordy, ten Cypress Street, East Falmouth, Mass, for permission to raise and reconstruct existing dwelling with associated clearing, grading, and landscaping within flood zone AE. The jurisdiction is that it is within flood zone AE twelve. And dated ten sixteen nineteen, this RDA is to raise and rebuild an existing dwelling with associated clearing, grading, and landscaping. The dwelling is located within the flood zone AE twelve only and not within a hundred feet of any other resource area. The existing town sewer connection will be maintained. Four dry wells are proposed to be tied into the new dwelling. Uh, there's a note there under recommendation. And I don't know quite what this means, but it says negative two under state and bylaw, the resource area boundaries are not confirmed by this RDA. Fire department, no comment. Engineering, uh, general comments regarding stormwater runoff. It says, we also recommend the board attic condition requires all portions of the roof to be connected to the proposed dry wells shown on the plan. Assessors, it includes land court lots one seventeen and one eighteen. Planning, no comment. Uh, Scott McGann from Health. He said, yes, the attic would be bedroom as currently shown. It appears to be a private greater than seventy square feet and has at least one window. Property is on sewer and is allowed for bedrooms. Notation, the LPSSA sewer tie-in permit is still open. We suggest checking with the building department to please close out the permit. There's one letter with comments and concerns. They also did submit, um, bulk calculations. Actually pass that to Ken if he wants to look at it. That's it.
Okay, and for the applicant tonight?
Uh, Michael McGordy, I'm the property owner, sir.
What can you tell us about our project, Mr. McGordy?
Yes, sir. Um, first, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for giving me this opportunity to give you my little presentation here. This is a property that was owned and the family and built by my father, who built ten of the existing homes on Cypress Street, nine of which are occupied by family members, and, uh, this is mine. It was one of the first ones built on the roadway. It, uh, it doesn't comply with any of the building codes of today. So any work that I would have tried to do to this, to make this property upgraded, would have required extensive structural work, and I'm looking to get a full basement in the house as well. So that's the reason I'm looking to raise it. Uh, I also would like to make it a little more conforming on the right and left side where it's kind of not crooked on the lot a little bit. And, um, I'm hoping to move down when I finish this project and make this my full-time home. And, uh, I have family members to the right and to the left, and further up to the right, and a little further to the left, and, uh, we, I would respectfully request a, a positive vote for the board to allow me to do this. My brothers have recently been before the board, probably within the last year and a half or so, I believe, and they've re-done their homes, and I intend to do this, I would like to do the same with your permission. Can answer any questions the best I can. Uh, just one other item, as far as the roadway goes, we're going to, my brothers and I are going to be completing the roadway. We've got approvals from conservation recently. We've had our engineering completed. Uh, we have it staked, and we're going to get it ready for, um, installation of the, um, stormwater runoff containment requirements that we're going to be putting in, and then get it asphalt so that the road will be completed all the way down past the house next to me, which is my mother's house as well. And, uh, it's right now presently, it sits in land court, um, and the town is party to it as well, but, uh, we, uh, we're going to address it and finish the roadway, and it will look really nice when it's done. Thank you.
We'll turn it to board questions if you're all set?
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, Mary, any questions?
Got it this time.
Yeah, so I have a couple of questions. So, um, we're sitting in AE twelve, it looks like they've elevated the first floor to be out of the flood zone.
Yeah, uh, that's correct. Uh, Falmouth Engineering has put together that package of my, the engineering, we've submitted it to FEMA, because the, the, one of the lines runs right through the front door and out the back corner of the house, so we have to adjust roughly six inches to a foot on that corner of the house because the yard slopes to get that authorization.
So I guess my question with that is, um, on the ones that I've seen in the past that they've done that, um, I've never seen mechanicals left in the basement. They've always also been elevated out of the basement?
Uh, yeah, well, I wouldn't, uh, put the mechanicals in the basement.
Because the plan that you've submitted shows the furnace and the hot water tank. But did it move? Maybe I'm looking at a.
I can, I, I think that was an oversight.
So where will, um, where, I can understand it was an oversight. Uh, do you know where they would be located? Because it's also not shown on any of the other plans.
Well, I would make sure, I would make a, uh, I would modify the, uh, plan on the second floor and the attic area to, um, put the, uh, mechanicals.
Okay, and then my other question was, um, I noticed that you changed a little bit so that you could stay at the four bedrooms.
Correct.
On the sewing room that's shown, that twelve by thirteen?
Yes.
Do you know what size of that, that open opening is?
The opening.
Because we, we usually condition a, a four-foot cased opening, so that can't be considered a bedroom?
Absolutely, it'll be a four-foot opening.
Is, is there enough room there for it, or?
I will absolutely make it out of the plan, submit. I originally wanted to use the attic as the sewing room, but under the Title V definition of a room, they state anything that is private, and I was, I had no intentions of using the, uh.
So you just might want to look at that plan just to see what you could do for four feet?
Compliance, yes, sir.
Uh, my, my only other comment in, it, it's more of a, you know, we, we look at these under two forty dash two sixteen for just character of the neighborhood. And everyone has their own taste and style. The, the only issue I have is that the way the front and the back of the house are laid out with windows, et cetera, it just seems that it makes the house look more bulk than it actually has. It's almost more voluminous, the, you know, the back of the house only has very high, you know, thin light windows, but the entire front of the house is all, you know, large windows along with the, the balcony. And, um, I don't know if the board remembers, but we had a similar situation with the house on Tower House Road a while back. And that, and the, that's what reminded me of the back of this house, and they were able to change a couple of things architecturally with some lines just to make it appear less bulk. I don't know if it's possible here, or?
I'll, I'll make every effort if it requires putting larger windows in.
Well, you could do whatever style, just, is, is, I, I don't know if you've dealt with an architect for it, but if, is there anything they can do so that it just appears less bulky, so it's more keeping with, you know, the other family homes on the street?
I, I will cha, I can absolutely change those windows to, uh, larger windows that conform to more towards the.
Yeah, whatever you think, you know, it's, it's your, it's your thing, but whatever they can do to try to just reduce the visual bulkiness of the structure in the front and back.
Absolutely will be addressed.
That, that's the only questions I have.
Ed? Ken, anything?
Are there any other abutting houses that are thirty-two feet?
In, in, in height with?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I, I don't know what the height is of eighteen Cypress Street with the, uh, or on their roof at that because they, that was just rebuilt as, as was sixteen. I know it's taller than fourteen Cypress, and it's probably a, a couple feet taller than the house beside me, which is the Garrison Colonial. I'm not sure what the heights of the.
Well, it, it goes to the issue of.
Yes.
Anything else, Ken? All right. Uh, so the engineering comment was, uh, threw in some standard language, but then it was, uh, slightly different from what we usually hear. There's, uh, so I, I suppose you already proposed dry wells, but then the engineering comment was asking that all portions of the roof tie in, so I'm sure.
Absolutely.
Be amenable to that.
Absolutely.
And, uh, well, was that the language? And it was a little different than what we usually hear, I was wondering.
Well, there was, there was two, so the, the Concom has asked that all of the everything be tied into the four on the plan, and then and then, yeah, so engineering put, we recommend the board attic condition that requires all portions of the roof be connected to the proposed dry wells shown on the plan. So. Maybe that would show full connections.
I think you heard the board of health, uh, referral too, you'd have to close out that. For some reason, that permit's still open from the sewer.
Sure, I, I, sure, I'll I was under the impression that, uh, my brother, who was the contractor, closed it out, but I'll call him shortly.
Those things happen.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, how many family members do live on the street?
There are, um, nine.
Fair to say they're in support of the project?
Y- yes, they are, thank you.
All right, uh, any other questions from the board?
No.
All right, uh, any members of the public have any questions, comments, concerns regarding this project? All right, seeing none, back to the board.
Happy to close, move, close.
Okay, motion to close by Ken and second by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And what would be the board's pleasure?
I, I, I would like, I guess. There, there's some revisions that have to be made to the plan. Just because I just think there are errors on here with the furnace, the heating system. And the only reason, um, I would like to see that before we vote is because I just don't know where they're going to put them and how that's going to have to change the layout. He also said that he was amenable to try to do something architecturally to try to decrease the visual bulk. It, it, it looks much different than everything else down there. And I think it's going to stick out like a sore thumb. I don't know how to. It just appears much larger, I think, than it is.
It's pretty close to the one that's there, isn't it?
Well, size-wise, it's just that if you look at the picture, and we've got the pictures on, uh, on plans. And if you look at that front facade versus the back, the people on the backside street are kind of like a tower house, so. I mean, I don't know how you want to proceed, I, I just, I, I would like to see the the changes that aren't on here. And I don't know if, if, if he brings the heating system up, I know he wants to and he has to by the flood elevation codes. When you, when you look on the layout that he has, I mean, I don't know where he's going to put it. He'll have to remove something.
But it seems, Robert, like we, we can condition that the mechanicals go upstairs.
And then he submit whatever the changes are.
Yeah, I think in terms, I mean, I think that biggest issue with the bulk is the height. And I don't think, but he's within his rights to build a thirty-two foot high.
And he does have to ra, and he does have to raise it due to the AE.
And he is making it more conforming with respect to side yard setbacks and stuff like that, so.
Maybe take the mechanicals and put them in the sewing room.
No opposition, no local opposition.
And in terms of, uh, windows, I mean, it's not a historic district, I don't think it's up to us what to legislate, but pay for the windows.
No, I wasn't looking for that. I was just, I, I don't know if you remember the one that we went back and forth a long time with that tower house, it was the same thing, you had one side wall.
You're talking about Narragansett Road?
No, in the Heights where they had the one wall that was.
Wasn't that Narragansett? Anyway, yes, but they.
They changed some of the their own choice of what they wanted to use, but it actually really did change, I mean, it's up now, it really has changed the the sheer feel of the mass of the building. Man, I don't know if you can do it on here or not, but.
They were over. They were over twenty-five percent where they're at, or over-
If you're happy to go forward with it, I'm not going to, I mean, I'm not going to hold them up for it.
I mean, I'm ve- I'm very familiar with this street, and I, I know everyone seems to get along pretty well. On one side of the street, anyway.
So I think we can just condition the mechanical room.
Yeah, the mechanical changes, and then you just submit the updated, the, the plans, once they update the plans.
All right. Does anyone want to make a positive motion?
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. Going on to findings?
Uh, meets two forty dash three C, two forty dash sixty-nine E, two forty dash two sixteen. Property's located in AE twelve, so needs to, um, to raise the grade of the first floor and also, um, meet all the code requirements to move the mechanicals out of the basement and any other issues in the basement having to do with the flood zone. They did have an RDA from the Conservation Commission. They are amenable to tie in all the, uh, all the roof area into the dry wells. And also the comments by the Conservation Commission to tie everything into the four dry wells. They submitted bulk, bulk calculations for the street.
I mean, conforming with respect to side yard, right?
Yep, correct. They did remove all the decking and also the rinsing station from the original property. Uh, they will need to close out the LPSSA sewer connection permit. Oh, uh. There is a, um, LPSSA requires a max of four bedrooms. Because of the current house layout, they would need to put a four-foot cased opening on the sewing room, so not to be considered a fifth bedroom.
Anything else for findings? Don't see any anyways. Uh, conditions?
Uh, they'll need to submit revised plans showing the mechanicals removed from the basement and also reflecting the four-foot cased opening on the sewing room. And also reflecting all the dry well connections where all the roof runoff. Uh, condition it on engineering comments as well as the comments from the Concom.
Anything else?
Don't think so.
All right, so motion-
Feel free to chime in.
I think you have everything, I'm looking at everything I wrote. Karen, anything?
No.
All right. All right, so that was a motion to approve made by Bob and seconded by Ed, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you.
And up next, uh, coming back to our continuations, we have, uh, application thirty-five dash nineteen, Dan Kirin, thirty-three Pheasant Lane in East Fowl.
You don't leave anything from here, right?
I was going to ask, is there anything new in the file? Just wanted to make sure.
Don't think so.
No, I'm sorry, can you, can you say something?
No, I, I was just going to see what what the next-
No, nothing new, just the continuation from before.
All right.
Seems to me we're ready to- Is there anything more we need to hear off?
Right, I was going to ask, I guess the question is, is there anything else? So there's nothing new in the file. Uh, there are four of us sitting on this application tonight, so any decision we would make would have to be-
We continue anyways.
Right.
So if there's no further information, I guess I'd make a motion to close.
I'd be happy to second that.
Wait, I'm sorry, I sent in a letter regarding standing. Now regarding the issue of harm. It's my understanding that town council was giving the guidance.
What, was that standing letter after the last continuance?
And it was then continued, um, and then that continued after the last hearing.
Noreen, I know I read a letter from the nineteenth, I don't see it in here. What, from the front section?
I'm not sure where it came from.
I have a copy, if anyone would like it, I also have this best case law on the end, on harm.
It's usually in this section.
I'm not sure where it went.
It says September nineteenth, I remember reading it, I just don't see it in here.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I think it got forwarded and printed. I'm just not sure if it's popping in this.
So if I don't see it in here, she could please present anyways on it and say what it is. I don't see it in the file, I know that we all received it, because I remember reading it.
I remember reading it as well, I just can't-
But where it's not in here, she might as well present whatever.
Sure.
Oh. Yeah, she's a giz.
So, uh, if you don't mind submitting the hard copy again to the file?
Sure. It's highlighted.
Highlights are good.
Oh, well, can I, I'll read the highlighted section and then I'll submit. Um, I, I have to say that I, I am disappointed, I've been in communication with town council specifically on this issue because, um, it is a legal issue, it is one of standing. There are two prongs to standing, the first being notice. We have a difference of opinion, but I understand that town council has guided you and you feel Mr. Van Kirin has, you know, met the notice requirements as to standing. The second part of standing, which is equally as important, is that an abutter has to prove that they are an aggrieved party, which means they have suffered some harm. Uh, the case law is very clear on this matter. So I'll read from my letter. Again, I communicated with Mr. Duffy just this week, and he said he was going to be providing guidance, so I have to say that I'm surprised and disappointed that that has not occurred. You know, that this has been going on for a while. So, um, a cornerstone of an appellant's right to challenge an administrative decision is that the appellant must demonstrate aggrievement, which courts have taken to mean that actual harm must be demonstrated. The appellant has presented no evidence that he is harmed by the construction of the home at thirty-three Pheasant Lane. In fact, the appellant has stated on the record and in news articles that he is appealing the matter on principle because he heard it was an unbuildable lot when he purchased his home in the nineteen eighties. One cannot bring an appeal for an enforcement action on principle is this not, is not an actual harm. To summarize the most salient case law, under law, any abutter to land that is subject to a zoning board decision enjoys a rebuttable presumption of standing. Meaning that an abutter does not have to prove standing unless the defending party offers evidence showing there is no substantial partic- particularized harm to the abutter. If the defending party does offer such evidence, then the burden of proof shifts to the abutter. I spoke of harm at our last hearing, which I believe now was in July, um, and said at that point that that was an issue and that Ed had not demonstrated harm. Evidence of the abutters' speculative personal opinions about the impacts of a board's decision is not enough. Instead, proof of standing must be shown by facts, often through, excuse me, through sworn statements or testimony of experts. In our previous hearing, I brought up the issue of harm to the Board and the appellant, who is not a physical abutter to thirty-three Pheasant Lane and has clearly not suffered partic- particularized harm, excuse me. So this was what I had submitted, um, and again, uh, there's ample case law. When, um, harm is raised, the appellant must show that he or she has suffered a particularized harm. There is, there are cases where neighbors have not been able to prove harm. Economic diminishment is not a harm. Mr. Van Kirin lives around the corner from this house. And at no time in any of his filings has he said anything about a harm suffered due to the building permit or now the appeal of the enforcement order.
Any questions?
Well, I guess I have a question. Are you arguing then that none of our bylaws with respect to lock coverage, sideline setbacks, or any of that, basically can be enforced because unless you can demonstrate actual harm to an abutter?
I'm suggesting that that is the case law, that someone bringing an actual claim has to prove that they are harmed by whatever, you know, the, the action has been or whatever the problem may, may be. So-
What is the role of these regulations?
Well, the role of the regulations is obviously, you know, to be followed and for the, the Building Department to follow these regulations. And one can, and can challenge this and can say, you know, these setback issues. But again, the courts have repeatedly said that unless you are harmed by the particular decision, you, you don't have, the, the Board here doesn't have jurisdiction to hear the claim. These are not issued, new issues before, you know, this Board. I know you've dealt with standing before in different matters and, and different issues, so, a- again, um, I don't, I don't think this is, um, new or novel in any way. It's very clear on the law, and, um, again, uh, I have an email from Frank Duffy that he was going to provide guidance from earlier this week, or maybe even late last week, because I wanted to be sure that this would be discussed tonight, and here we are again, and you know, there wasn't even a record of the letter, and clearly you haven't, you know, gotten any advisement from town council.
Just so you know, and like I said, I couldn't find the record, the letter in the file, I can confirm that I did receive it by email.
Yep.
I know Mary received it by email, it all went out to everyone, I just don't know where the, I know-
I reviewed it.
And I reviewed and read it, so it wasn't-
Just as the Chair, apologies that it wasn't in the physical file here tonight, but I, I do remember reviewing it earlier.
Yeah, but we did, we did read the redder, just so you know, it's the same.
Um, and may I ask, did you receive any guidance from town council?
I deferred to Noreen on that, have we received any new updates from town council?
Anything that comes in from town council is forwarded out to you.
Right. So since the last hearing, we haven't, I don't believe we've received anything. All right, I don't believe there's anything from town council, but in the past week, I know that he's corresponded to us regarding this application since it began, but-
Sure.
Nothing recently.
Okay.
So with regard to standing and Mr. Van Kirin as an abutter, reviewing the file and specifically looking over the certified abutters list, Mr. Van Kirin actually received notification of this appeal as an abutter, do you care to comment on that at all?
Oh, yeah, there's, there's, there's case law on that as well. Um, so, um, when notice goes to abutters, they are interested parties. Um, and there's a clear delineation in case law, um, between interested parties, so it, it is often that towns themselves or developers notice, and it's a three-hundred-foot radius, potentially interested parties. That does not mean that they are an aggrieved party. So, yes, while he was noticed, we wanted to, to make sure anyone that could potentially bring a claim of a, of a harm of such a violation, that is their right. But again, that, there is a clear delineation in case law between that very question. And those are deemed interested parties versus an aggrieved person, which is what is the definition. The definition is not contained within the statute, that's why we have to look to case law, what an aggrieved party is as an abutter. And again, uh, case law through the years have been building, but, you know, most recently, the case law is very firm that there are limited circumstances as to when, uh, an abutter can prove particularized harm and actually have standing to bring a claim.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, just one question. So if you have a, if you have a neighborhood area that has certain properties that weren't developed, and weren't thought to be able to be developed, and then those areas are developed, and that now affects, you know, dimension issues and density in a neighborhood, wouldn't a change in density in a neighborhood be an aggrievement of a party?
So the presumption now shifts to Ed.
I'm asking the ques- yeah, so I'm asking the question, if you have a neighborhood like that had an area that wasn't developed?
There, there are cases on this, yes, actually. And again, uh, you know, it, it, if it's a significant increase in, uh, density, potentially, yes. Um, if there was a significant increase in traffic, yes, that could potentially rise to the level of an aggrievement to give someone standing.
So does it have to be significant, or just any change?
Significant.
And what's the definition for significant?
Again, it's case to case, but, uh, the bar is rather high.
Because your argument here has never really been that it was a buildable lot. Your argument has just always been that the applicant doesn't have standing to make the case.
My argument is, but it's a build- My argument is it's a buildable lot. We got a building permit, and then Mr. Van Kuren brought a claim that we thought, have thought this entire time for a variety of reasons, he had no, no standing.
But, but you were aware there were three denials on the same...
We've discussed this. No, I was not until after the fact. And then I went to the town and I asked them.
So, I guess I get back to the same thing on that. If you're doing work for someone to prove buildability on a site...
Yes.
And you know that denials aren't recorded, but approvals are recorded at the registry
Yes.
On decisions.
Yes.
Why wouldn't you or the developer or the original property owner check with the boards that would be the ones that are aware of the denials? And if you didn't, why would you check off on a building application that there were no denials if you never confirmed that there was one?
I didn't, I didn't check off anything on, on that.
So, I, I would assume, and I guess because it was only signed by Mr. McCrone, and Mr. McCrone is the one that filled out the application?
Yes.
So, why wouldn't Mr. McCrone check?
I don't act, I, I understand your questioning.
No, I just...
I didn't check the file, but I'm not the person that issued the building permit. It's, it, the commissioner didn't check his own file.
No, I understand that, but you're doing the submittal to prove buildability.
Right.
And that's a significant portion that would prove buildability or not.
And as to my letter of buildability, it had to do with common ownership, and I did not see a, a problem as to my, my letter of buildability, which was my portion of the application.
So, when you do letters of buildability, then you never checked to see if there was denials on parcels?
I sure do now, but previous to this, no.
It's not previous, it just wasn't your previous practice?
No. And my understanding of working with various zoning attorneys, most attorneys do not make those inquiries as well. Because again, I think the idea is that it's an internal record and that that's the building commissioners and the building departments, you know, they should be checking their files.
Did you review the application at all before it was submitted?
No, again, which is very standard. I work with a developer who develops a site plan. My piece of the pie is to, you know, submit, submit a letter of buildability.
So, would it be possible to hear from Mr. McCrone on why he checked off that there were no denial decisions on this parcel and that the parcel was not an undersized lot of record?
First of all, on a building permit here in town, it doesn't ask that.
So, it's on the permit that you actually submitted?
It says it asks if there's, there's any zoning stuff. How am I, I have a letter of buildability, a permit in my, like, when I filed that building permit, I don't know if...
So, the, so the application that you submitted and that was submitted in the file, so, so the building department sent us all the information they had in the application file?
Okay.
The application that was submitted and signed by you but not the property owner was filled out saying that they, there was no decisions regarding the zoning board.
Yeah, I...
So, the building department didn't check that off, and you signed the application?
Yeah.
So, my question is, why would you check that off on an application?
Because I, first of all, I filed the building permit contingent on the commissioner to give me his decisions. I don't do the research on the actual lot. My job is to make sure that there's a letter of buildability, right, which my attorney provides to me. I file a building permit. It's up to the commissioner to dictate if the lot is buildable or not buildable. I bought the law contingent on him issuing me a building permit.
I understand that. My question is in the application that you filled out personally...
Yes.
And submitted to the building department.
Okay.
You checked off in the box you could have left blank.
On a blank lot, I had no zoning...
There was no zoning decisions. I could understand if you left it blank and didn't know. I could understand if the letter of buildability came in and the information and for some reason, the, your counsel didn't check that there were any denials. But I don't know why somebody would check off a box saying there are no denials.
Because I, I don't...
If, if you don't have confirmation that there aren't any denials.
Because I filed probably 10 building permits for new structures prior to that and, and checked the box just like that because I had a letter of buildability and no awareness of the lot being non-buildable.
I, I would like to just mention that if in fact it is up to the building commissioner to make that determination, it wouldn't be on the form asking the applicant to check the box for ZBA decisions.
Well, that's on any permit. That's like if, if I was to file a building permit after getting you guys to give me permission as some of these other people have been in front of you this evening. That's where you would check, yes, there's a zoning thing. Like, that's the difference. Like, on a new lot, I've never run into this. You, 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 you're talking to me like I did something like corrupt or like beyond like, like I filed a permit, like I filed every permit prior to this. Like, it's not my job to do the commissioner's job. If this lot wasn't deemed buildable and it was in his computer, that's up to him to determine, not me.
Mr. McCrone?
Yes.
We're not accusing you of any...
I am getting accused. That's, that's, I mean...
Mr. McCrone, we're not accusing you of any sort of corruption.
I'm frustrated here. I'm very frustrated. This is a waste of time, a waste of money, and it, we haven't gotten anywhere. This has been almost a year.
Mr. McCrone?
Yes.
This, and I'm sure your attorney can tell you, this application itself, it is highly fact specific.
Okay.
Member Dugan is only asking you a few questions, and these are serious issues with this appeal that we're just trying to get answers to. If you have nothing else to contribute, you can sit back, sit back in the crowd.
Okay, do you have any other questions for me at this point?
Any other questions? Thank you for your time tonight.
Okay.
I did want to say one thing. I do think...
If, if you could please come to the board, you can't be speaking from your seat. Thank you.
I, I do think it is the obligation of the zoning administrator to also check the file for any potential zoning issues. That is my understanding, and, and so, again, what I'm here to talk about, and again, we clearly keep talking about different issues, but is a simple matter of standing. And that's what, you know, was my intention tonight. And again, clearly through some miscommunication, it was my understanding that Mr. Duffy was going to provide some guidance as to harm and aggrievement, and clearly he has not. So, you know, I guess we're left in the holding pattern that we've been in for the last few months.
Thank you, Attorney Sormus.
So, just for the record, the zoning administrator only sees what is referred to the zoning administrator. We are not referred every permit that is requested.
Thank you, ma'am.
And in this case?
It was not referred.
Okay. Mr. Van Kuren, I don't know if you had anything to add?
I just want to say this thing, because I've been going on for nine months plus and I gave the building commissioner information, and it was a problem.
And I'll just ask if there's any members of the public have any questions, comments, concerns regarding this appeal? Okay, seeing none, back to the board.
Well, I, I do feel like we've, we've probably explored this in as much detail as we possibly could. That doesn't mean that we've reached an agreement with respect, you know, with respect to the, whether the issue, you know, of standing or aggrievement and so forth, I think that's to be hashed out maybe in discussion, but I don't see how any additional testimony is going to help us. So, I'd be happy to move that we close this.
Second.
Motion closed by Ken and second by Mary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And so, that would be the question of how to proceed from here now that the hearing's closed.
Well, maybe we ought to talk about what we feel we have found and see what our consensus is.
I think that's fair. Would you like to start us off, Ken?
I'm happy to start with the issue of whether Mr. Van Kuren is, it's fair to consider him a, an abutter with standing. I think that's the first thing, right? And it seems to me he, from what I understand, from everything we've heard, he was on the certified abutter list, and the developer himself sent notification to Mr. Van Kuren of the project. So, in that sense, he, it seems to me, he's, he's an abutter. What does everybody else think?
I generally agree with you on that point.
I would say that he has presumptive standing in that regard.
Yeah, I would agree too. He's on the certified li, we, we rely on the certified list, and that's what we go by. So, whether a court changes whatever the opinion is, if he's on that list, I would consider him an abutter with standing.
All right, so we all seem to be in agreement there. Anything else, Ken?
Yes, there's the issue of what the, of aggrievement in the, in these pre-existing decisions, you know? What constitutes being aggrieved?
It seems subjective, so that's why I was trying to find out what significant aggrievement is. If I was in an, if I was in a neighborhood that had land that was set aside or wasn't buildable and I owned a house in an area, now suddenly something that was not buildable is buildable, and I have an older property, it is going to change some things for me. It's going to change the traffic on the street. It's going to change that there is a greater choice of properties on the street if somebody wanted to purchase. In this case, they have rights to water access. It's going to change the usage on the water access. And if I bought a property in an area, being assured that there was an unbuildable parcel and I use that in making my decision to purchase, and suddenly that's reversed, I would consider that an aggrievement. And I understand some of the other issues in this case. What I don't understand is, when this all started way back when, the process to finish the property was just sped up. Nobody took a pause. And there's going to be issues for all parties in that case, but people made their own decisions on what they wanted to do, and we have to look at this separately. We have to look at it in standing. We have to look at it in all the information that was submitted to the file in the case. We have to look at the, you know, it's not one denial. There were three denials, so we have to then review those. I reviewed all the denials. I reviewed all the information that, you know, that Mr. McCrone's counsel gave. The reason that I'm bothered a lot by this is when I read the previous denials, they're very clear that this was not a buildable lot. They were very clear that it, it couldn't take grandfathering because the lots were never checkerboarded. If there was a title search done, and I'm sure there was, it was never submitted to us, we did request, I would assume the tax takings would have appeared on the title. I would assume that some of the other issues would have come up on the title. They, they would have realized some of these issues in the area. I also think it's very unusual that suddenly a lot that's never, you know, sat in a desirable neighborhood for all these years, that no one's had any interest with, is, you know, suddenly just sold and, you know, it's just luckily enough that somebody signed off on a, on a permit without checking anything. You know, it's, and it's not only the zoning board. The zoning, the previous zoning boards, and I knew nothing about it at the time, they both denied this twice. But their planning board also denied this. The town is actually an abutter. Personally, I think the town should have appealed, but they're actually an abut, a direct abutter. Still have property there. But to, just to put this on, 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 you know, I did everything right and I didn't mean to do this or that, there were so many red flags from the application out. And I, and, and I think the seller is on the hook. Seller was quite aware of denials. There's no reason he shouldn't have reported that to anyone purchasing the property. Through this whole process, you know, there's never even, I mean, the property's been marketed, and it should be. They don't have a decision on this. But I don't even know if there's been any disclosures that anyone was even aware that there is any kind of issue with the site on the current marketing of the homes.
May I interject?
No. The hearing's closed.
I just, I just think it's, I just think it's the issues in general, we're going around and around in circles. Nobody is saying that this is a buildable lot, and I think that's the big issue. It isn't. And maybe the town is liable. Maybe he shouldn't have given the permit. But if we're looking at this and we're looking at standing...
Well, I mean, we're just being asked whether we, we want to uphold the appeal of the building permit.
There's so, there's so much...
Real simple.
There's, there's so much factual information in there, in, in the file, that even in the building file, that, that states that this is not a buildable lot?
If you don't mind, I can outline those. I wrote them all down from looking at the file, if you think that's appropriate.
Well, I, I don't want to go quite there just yet, but I just want to remind everyone that this is an appeal of the building commissioner, and it was Mr. Van Kuren's inability to obtain zoning enforcement for a non-buildable lot.
So, my opinion is that he does have standing. I think he was aggrieved. I don't know if anyone else agrees with me or not. If we do decide that he does have standing, then we should just break down and go over all the information from the file of what backs up the claim it's an unbuildable lot. We'll go from there.
I can agree to, to that. I mean, to me, this is a very fundamental issue of do these, does it mean anything if you have several determinations that say it's an unbuildable lot and someone applies for a permit, and then someone else says, no, hold on, I appeal that, and there's no, and nothing happens, and the, and the construction proceeds? Where's, where's the rights of, of any abutter? I think this, we, I personally feel we should uphold the appeal.
And I think we're all leaning that way? All right. So, it would have to be unanimous, I believe, if we were to make a motion. So, that leaves us with the decision of what to do tonight. How do we, we close the hearing? We're not taking any more testimony. We've heard, we've heard everything we need to hear, I believe, and just how to proceed from here tonight.
I mean, I guess we should probably, I don't know if you take a vote first that the party has standing or if we need to go over the findings in general?
Well, that's the question. Should we vote on individual findings or should we just?
I mean, I personally did, I mean, I didn't make a list of findings tonight because I didn't know what the outcome would be, but if we did go forward with findings, we could discuss some, but I would want to continue to another date to, you know, to at least submit whatever I think was from the file.
Well, I mean, I have some, some material here.
Well, Mary, I think you, did you say you made a...
Yeah.
Okay, so just the, the feeling I'm getting, maybe we direct Noreen to draft a decision and give her some guidance tonight and take it up on... and give her some guidance tonight, and take it up on-
And then take it up to review-
Another night to, to review?
To review and approve.
I'm fine with that.
So, Mary, do you wanna just-
Okay, I'll start. Um, whether or not it's a, a buildable lot, in going through the file, um, the planning board, nine four nineteen ninety-one, there was a petition for a special permit under section thirty-four twenty-six, which was denied. Then, under section two forty dash sixty-six C four, to the building commissioner, he denied a building permit to construct a single-family dwelling. That was December sixteen nineteen ninety-three. ZBA number twenty-one ninety-four dated three fifteen nineteen ninety-four, the ZBA denied the appeal as a buildable lot. ZBA number twenty-two ninety-four, five twenty-six nineteen ninety-four, the ZBA denied the variance to construct a single-family dwelling. At that time, it, the file indicates that research was done looking at four hundred lots in Falmouth, and that five, including this one, were found to be non-buildable. In nineteen ninety-three, at town meeting, there was a, an, a zoning amendment to construct a single-family dwelling, and that zoning amendment failed.
Yeah, go ahead.
Does anybody have anything more in that, the build, buildable lot?
You've got it pretty well covered.
I think that's good. Uh, Ken, you said you had-
I can go on?
Oh, sure. I'm, I'm sorry, Mary. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
I think there was a question about when was the appealing party first aware of the building permit issuance, and that the party who brought the appeal, um, had, has provided sufficient evidence that he didn't have formal or actual notice of the building permit until after or shortly before the expiration of the thirty-day period on January twenty-six, twenty nineteen. And that was provided in testimony, where, um, the, the party noticed activity the week of January twenty-eight ni- uh, twenty nineteen, and that the twenty-sixth is the thirty-day expiration period, and that the actual notice of that activity was taking place was January twenty-eighth through February one. So it's a, that basically ties that up. Then the timeliness of the appeal to the ZBA, September three twenty nineteen, from the building commissioner, declined to issue a cease and desist order for thirty-three Pheasant Lane for reasons explained July eighteen twenty nineteen. In Septem- on September twenty, twenty nineteen, uh, the, the appealer, um, sent a letter appealing the inability to obtain an enforcement action for the non-buildable lot. The, we've, we've spoken about the requirements to be an aggrieved party, and, um, well, I guess we should do the a butter first, right?
Yeah.
Or did we?
I think we, we talked about it earlier. Maybe that could just be part of the record, what we, our prior discussion.
Is that enough?
I think that's fine.
And then with the aggrieved, um, I think I, I heard said that the zoning bylaws, um, this was an undersized lot, and that the bylaws regulate density, dimension of lots, um, and the aim there is to ensure open space where lots are undersized and don't meet the requirements of the bylaws. And if this, whether by mistake or intentionally, is done, it results in harm, and an aggrievement would happen. Um, it might even go as far as to proving harm to the general community as well as harm to self. And also, uh, under community aggrievement, I would, I would say that it probably takes in, uh, it's not just a mere impact, but a harm or injury to gain standing. Um, we're not talking about something where a, a view is blocked, or something like that. This is truly harm.
Anything else, Mary?
That's it for me.
Alright. Ken, did you have anything to add?
So, I guess the key thing then is that we're, we're finding that, given these facts, the building commissioner, 'cause he's, after all, this is an appeal of his decision, committed an error in issuing the building permit. I think that's a key finding that we, we need to include, and that if even a rudimentary amount of investigation had been done by the building commissioner, or the building department, they would have discovered these e- existing decisions. Uh, so, you know, it's, it's not clear to me why they didn't. Um, you know, the other thing I think that is worthy of note is, is that the, uh, that we ought to find is that it's not as if there was no notification of the owner developer of this property that there might be a problem. That happened, uh, early on in the construction process, and yet they proceeded at, at their own peril, uh, when they, they could have said, "Hold on, we gotta get this resolved before we, uh, you know, finish the project."
I, I would mention that at least my reading of the file was that at some point in time, there was a brief period where work had stopped, when the building commissioner had spoken to those building, the property, the, the home, and it did stop for a short period.
So I know there was a reference to that in the file. I just don't know if it, what the reason for stopping was, if it was notification, or it could have been a ton of other factors.
It could have been.
But the fact is that then, despite, you know, the appellate's, uh, multiple appeals to the building commissioner, um, the work went on.
I do think it's a good point to point out that it does fall on the building commissioner, you know, whether or not whatever was submitted, um, they too should have confirmed the information on the application.
The-
We were s- we were submitted-
As I understand it, there were, there's a couple of checkboxes. One said, "Is this an undersized lot?"
If it's an error, and they checked it in error, he should have still, the building commissioner still should have confirmed it.
Mm-hmm.
Because nothing was submitted with the application from the ZBA confirming that there was any issues, that there was any decisions. So even though he received it that way, he still should have reviewed it.
Well, especially after he was made aware by, by the appellate here that, uh, that there might be a problem.
When we received the information from the building department, the one thing we didn't receive, that I assume is usually required, is that normally if a developer takes out the permit, and at the time, somebody else is in ownership of the property, there's usually some kind of affidavit or statement from the property owner giving them permission. Whether that was submitted, it just wasn't given to us when the building commissioner forwarded the file. So I couldn't find anything in the file that the building commissioner had that said that the seller had signed off-
Uh, on the-
On the building application.
On the building application with the, with the developer.
Yeah. So I just don't know if it was in the file, and we just didn't get it forwarded to us, but we could make the finding that we did not receive that, when the building commissioner forwarded us all the information he had on the file.
And that would normally be received in order to consent to the construction.
Required, yeah. At the time.
It seems like there's a whole host of problems.
Uh, there was a, uh, and I don't, we'd have to find, in one of the decisions, in one of the denials, there was a quotation, a quote from the current building commissioner at the time. It was Aladio Gore. Uh, and one of the statements was that they, that lot also couldn't take any protection under grandfathering because the lots were never checkerboarded.
Mm-hmm.
So I'd like to have that notated somewhere from the previous building commissioner, and that can come right out of, um, the testimony from that decision, 'cause he sent the information on it.
So taking all that into account, I guess I'd be happy to make a motion that we uphold the appeal, uh, as amended, and order the building commissioner to revoke the issued building permit, uh, and the occupancy permit for thirty-three Pheasant Lane.
Okay. And as far as the, uh, decision goes, do we wanna-
Well, maybe we, you wanna see a draft from or, from Noreen with, with these findings incorporated into it, and then we could just vote that.
I think that's appropriate.
Okay. So, why don't I make that, that I would ask Noreen to draft a motion that states that we appeal the, uh, that we uphold the appeal of the building commissioner, of the building commissioner's decision, and order him to revoke the issued building permit and occupancy permit.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Alright, so that motion was made by Ken, and seconded by Bob. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, do you wanna pick a date?
Oh.
So we need a date, so what's the next?
Uh, the next date is the twenty-first, and then after that, I'm not sure.
Um, do you have a forty-B decision that you have to wrap up on the twenty-first? I don't know if you wanna do the fifth? Here, how much time?
I think the fifth might be appropriate, given the amount of information that's gonna have to be typed up and, and reviewed before the meeting. Do you want to, uh, amend the motion to twelve-five?
So by the fifth of Decem- so please provide this draft by the fifth of December.
Alright, so that motion was made by Ken, and seconded by Bob. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright. And we will take a five-minute break. And we will take a five-minute break. Okay, and we are back from our five-minute break, continuing right along on our agenda. We have application forty-two dash nineteen Hawks Wayarma, six forty-one West Falmouth Highway. Attorney Amet, I believe you're standing in for Attorney Clower tonight.
I am, thank you very much, members of board, I am Bob Amet, I'm a Falmouth attorney. My partner is Kevin Clower, and Kevin couldn't be here tonight. And I believe this is the fifth hearing related to this project. And I also understand that, or expect that town council has, in this case, in fact, issued some advice in a memo of October thirty-one, which I haven't had an opportunity to receive, and if it's considered by the board, I'd like to receive a copy to follow along as you review it. Attorney Clower and I met with Frank Duffy, the town council, and Iri Mullin, the assistant town council, on October thirty. And the town council, and I think this would be in the memo from Attorney Mullin, has, I think, given the board a roadmap to approve this project, a project which I think you want to approve, and were held up by the question of whether multifamily housing, including a single-family dwelling, which is of course allowed, and whether that single-family dwelling can be in the residence zone, as it has been allowed in the past. Since town council disagrees with that, and has given another way to approve the project, I won't dwell on that issue, and I think it's probably been discussed quite a bit at the previous hearings. But what the town council has, I believe, said, and this is based on our conversations with Mr. Duffy and Ms. Mullin, and we haven't seen the resulting memo, is that the property, in fact, is non-conforming, and that the existing non-conformance would allow the board to approve the proposal under section two forty-three of the zoning bylaw. Upon your finding that the proposal is not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conformance, I think you would find it impossible, or very hard, to say the least, to find any detriment to the proposal to put a single-family dwelling in the back of this lot, twenty-five feet away from Stagecoach Lane, where it could be ten feet from the lane by designating the front yard as West Falmouth Highway. And the absence of detriment, I think, is indicated by the fact that there are some forty to fifty, I lost count, forty to fifty letters of support for this special permit in your file. And I believe it's accurate to say there are zero letters in opposition, and those letters of support are from people in this very neighborhood. I'd be happy to say more. I think you now have a way you can approve this project. Again, I think you want to. I hope you will, but I'd like to, I think you need to hear, if you haven't already read it, but I haven't seen it, the town council's memo, and I hope it says what we think it says. And that with that, you'll be able to make a quick work of what has been going on for a long time now. So I'd like to reserve further remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob, is there a memo in the file? And if there is, perhaps we could vote to release it?
So it's not in the file because it's private counsel to you board members. So while it was forwarded to you, it's not in the public file.
Right, okay, so we can, if everyone's comfortable, I'm trying to find it. We can at least release that?
You can run up and get a copy if you want.
If you could.
That'd be great.
Sorry.
It's on October thirtieth, that's the one?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I've been looking for it.
Uh, I think it's dated, it's thirty-first, it's dated, no?
Yes.
We should have music or something.
What's that?
We can inter-music or something.
Yeah, we should. FCTV.
UZAC.
Yeah. That it could be.
There's a lot of new developments for our town meeting.
Asbestos. Oh, we'll have to go right after.
I don't know, do we need to, we don't need to make another application under two forty-three C, do we? Can we just add it?
Okay, remember?
Yeah, I think that's what we should do. It went out there. Looked at it, have you looked at it?
Sorry, Noreen.
Okay.
Thank you. During the interval break, I think most of us have it up on our phones, and we do have the hard copies here from Noreen, thank you, Noreen.
So I would, I would make a motion to release from town council to the applicant's council.
All right, so a motion was made by Bob and seconded by Ed to release town council's opinion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Attorney Amet, you can review that, and I know the outstanding issues were multifamily portion of this, two forty fifty-one A five, and also the issue with two forty-three C.
That's that one, so there's one, there's actually one more. This one was from Iri, this is October thirtieth.
They say the same thing.
They do.
It just says a different one.
Okay, it's the same.
It's the same. I think they've just compressed it.
It essentially says the same.
Same, says the same.
Yeah, sorry, there's a little confusion, there's two emails, but they say the same thing, so.
I've only seen the one. The one at four fifty-seven on October twenty-nine, so.
Right.
But it does say that the board can choose to allow the multifamily use in the residential B-zone under a section two forty-three C special permit.
Right.
To convert a pre-existing non-conform use to the proposed multifamily. Given the nature of this so-called multifamily use, which is a single-family dwelling that's proposed back there, it is a component of multifamily housing. But I think it's allowed, and it gets some really terrible results, if you have an existing, if you already had the existing house in the back of one of those properties, and I can think of one like this, the idea that that means you can't have a duplex in front even by special permit is just unfair and it's wrong, but let's not go there. Let's just go with town council's roadmap of agreeing that there is non-conforming use of the residential area because of a garage which is non-conforming, both as to its use and location, we will be eliminating a non-conformity and not creating any new non-conformances. Let's just go with that. I don't think you have any problem allowing the duplex use as part of multifamily in the business zone, which is the existing use. And I'd point out that approving this special permit preserves the historic integrity of the structure in front. Because instead of trying to do something with that, build another structure next to it, add on to it, it's being left alone, it's been, I understand, significantly improved in recent years by the applicants. And we're not trying, going to touch that, leave that as a duplex, they will move out of their apartment in that building and move into their new home in the rear, quite a ways, quite a bit of ways from the residence, and yet set back from Stagecoach. And so I think you can do this, and I sincerely hope that you agree. I'm happy to try to answer questions.
Question for you, Bob, can I ask a question? So, I, because I don't have the original stuff in front of me. Is the application specifically site two forty-three C?
Well, in response to town council's advice, basically, again, I've called it a roadmap for how do we get where we want to get, we amended the application and submitted, we submitted a vendor one about it.
Yes, we have the new ones, what does it, it references both two forty-three C and two forty fifty-one A five.
Okay.
Any other questions for Attorney Amet? Any members of the public have any questions, comments, concerns regarding this project? Seeing none, back to the board.
First, I'd happily move that we close.
Can't say ask to.
That's always an easy one.
That's the easy one. All right, so motion to close made by Ken, seconded by Ed, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just for the purposes of this vote, it'll be Mary as well voting on this. All right, any brief discussion before we go any further, or?
I'm happy to make a motion in favor.
All right.
Yeah, I think it's a nice way to get out of this, because it's a good project.
It is.
So I guess the findings.
So this would mean two forty-three C and two forty-
Right, well, so, I guess the critical finding is that there's an existing, pre-existing non-conforming garage located in the residentially-zoned portion of the lot that serves the multifamily use, right?
Yep.
Did I say that okay?
Yep, sounded good to me.
Thanks, I got a thumbs up from Bob.
That's always good.
And the second part of that is that the construction of a single-family, well, of a house on the rear residentially-zoned portion of the split lot is no more detrimental than the existing.
In the garage, yeah, and the garage was used for parking for the duplex, so it is an accessory to the two-family use.
Also, you know, there's going to be, as I understand it, there's going to be a removal of some derelict buildings on this site, that will improve the site.
Garage removed, yep.
And then now we'll make it conforming to use and location. The multifamily use will be a total of three units. With a third unit placed in the residential B-zone.
Anything else for findings?
No, just that though the new structure will be in the residential portion of the lot containing one dwelling, which is a single-family, it is a multifamily use in the area.
There are some proposed expansions of the, of the single-family use in the back, including, I don't know if we want to recognize those in the decision, the proposed pool, I think there's a proposed garage that I'm not sure is going to be built initially. And I'm just wondering if there's, if we want to put any of that in the decision.
When they amended the application, the actual plans remains the same, correct? So we would have, so we would have to, we would have to say something, because it was reviewed by conservation.
So we might just want to say so long as the dimensions- So we might just want to say so long as the dimensions don't exceed those shown on the proposed plan.
I think testimony had it that, at least that portion of the project was proposed for further in time, I guess, for-
Right, it's not going to happen right now.
For lack of a better term. Anything else for findings?
Do we need to notate it all the, what, when it was discussed?
I think it's worth mentioning.
It's okay, I mean, it, it, it met their approval. I just didn't know if we need to mention that in the-
I think we typically mention that sort of thing.
The conservation.
And the conservation reviewed and approved.
Alright, anything else for findings?
Uh, it will be a new structure, a new septic system.
Sorry, what else?
Oh, under two forty-two sixteen. Advancement of the method of waste sewage disposal.
Anything else for findings? Just checking up, Bob?
Yeah, I just want to check the, um... If there's anything over the garage.
Over the proposed garage?
Yeah, so there's a, um, so on the plans, it shows a stairway going up over the garage to a bonus room. But it doesn't look like there's access into the house. So I guess if we go by this, at this time, we would have to say that the room over the garage is unfinished. No, it just says bonus room. It just says, it's, it's showing as unfinished space with a stairway from the interior of the garage.
How many bedrooms total in the house right now?
Three.
Three.
I guess we could-
Attorney Ammon, would you like to just address that?
Well, I just want to point out that a four-bedroom septic system is being installed under Title V. That means you can have a nine-room house. That would include that bonus room, I believe. Compliance with the Board of Health regulations is obviously of an appropriate condition. It's obvious that that's what we have to do. I don't think you need to get into how many ru-, what rooms are used as bedrooms and so on. We have to comply with Title V. A four-bedroom system is, is under Title V regulations. Good for a nine-room house regardless of the number of bedrooms. I can elaborate on that if you don't know that rule.
No, but just for, just for the record, for finished space, is it finished, it's finished above the garage?
You'd like to be able to finish above the gar-, the garage.
So maybe we put a finding in that the plans show it as unfinished space right now. Septic system will cover four bedrooms. So if they choose to finish that into bedroom in the future, it's covered by the Title V.
Sounds good to me. Anything else for findings? Conditions?
Uh, per plans, per revised plans.
Anything else for conditions?
Let me just see if, uh... I guess engineering comments, there'd be no stormwater directed to public property. It butters the right of way per two forty-one eleven C. Recommend that to our wells. So roof areas be either added to the site design or revised. They'd like to have the plan revised to show the... There's a fence on the six forty-one side of the parking lot for six thirty-five adjacent. It just isn't shown on the plans. Will that remain? I guess make a finding that there's an existing utility pole in Stagecoach Way that does have overhead wires serving fourteen. They'll run close to the dwelling location. May have to be relocated. Uh, and it just seems, there's some grading issues. I, I would just defer to the engineering department for any-
The grading was revised on the last plan submitted to address that.
We should, um, also, uh, make a finding that it's outside of the West Falmouth Historic District, which is setback is a hundred and fifty feet from the road edge.
Alright, anything else?
But if the grading has been revised on the revised plan, then we just, by saying as per plan, it's been incorporated.
The, um, the new structure will have to have its own water service. Capital will need to apply for service for new structure. I think that's it.
Alright, so if that's it for findings and conditions.
Noreen, you got all that?
I believe the motion was made by Ken and seconded by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You need to finish the vote.
I'm sorry?
You need to finish the vote.
Finish it?
Yeah, you need to ask as any opposition.
Oh, any opposition? Oh, I'm s-, I'm sorry. Alright, so it's four to one. It's not unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty.
Can you steal me one more of Ed's?
Yes. Alright, so up next we have application thirty-nine dash nineteen, seven ninety-seven Main Street LLC. Seven ninety-seven Main Street in Falmouth. And for the applicant?
Uh, Hal Truber, consulting engineer. I'm the engineer for the applicant. Mr. Chair and members of the boards, as you recall, at the last meeting, there were still two open topics or items of concern. One item was the loading space for the facility, and there was discussions about providing a loading space, sharing a loading space with the parking space, with some signage to prevent parking between certain hours. I did revise the plan for, for this. I do have a revised site plan. And I can circulate copies to the board members. I did send it to Ashley yesterday.
You don't mind handing it to Bob? He can stamp it in for us. Thank you.
Uh, so prior to revising the plan at the last meeting, if you recall, I did submit revised site plan showing the access of the delivery truck with the turning radiuses as requested by Mr. Dugan at the prior meeting. On this plan, if you look at the plan, on the last angle parking, towards to the back of the property, to the south, the parking space is fourteen feet wide by thirty feet long. That should accommodate a delivery truck. And this also, I've added a sign. It's on, the detail of the sign is on the sheet to the upper-left corner. And this is for the loading space, and it says no parking between eight AM and ten AM. This is where we expect all the deliveries to be, uh, delivered in the morning. As far as the second, at the last item, the, the, um, of concern, and this has to do with Cycle Avenue, and I did, at that meeting, I did present to the board emails from the butter, from the property, the, the property owners to the south, east and west. That's Falmouth eight fifteen LLC, uh, which, uh, has an agreement with my client to use Cycle Avenue for parking. And in that email, he indicated that he owns the property. This is, it's shown on the assesses' maps as a private property. It's not, but I, I understand Mr. Dugan had some questions about that. And, uh, he wanted to, uh, get the opinion of the town council or get in contact with planning. I believe you do have a memo from, uh, Mr. Bott, the town planner, that, you know, addressed those issues in details, and I'm, I'm not, I'm sure you have copies of those, and says, "We looked at the agreement. We're fine with it. The parking is, is, is okay. We're not, we don't, we're not objected to this. And Cycle Avenue is a private property." This is my, uh, understanding from the memo, so I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Ken, do you have any questions?
You haven't asked for any, have you asked for any reduction in parking requirement?
No.
You're entitled to ask for some.
I know. We, we have, we did not.
Why not?
That's a good question. We have an agreement for what, with the butter. I think it works well for both properties in terms of access and, and parking. They, you know, and this is one of the, items or topics that would, you would encourage in your business redevelopment, uh, so.
Shared parking, yes.
Yeah.
Right, but you, 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 you are creating some additional parking spaces around the building. There's two things that occurred to me looking at this plan. One was whether or not you need as much outside seating as you've got. That would reduce your parking needs. And you could, uh, increase the landscaping in front. And the other was, was, uh, asking for a reduction in parking requirement.
No, no reduction. I, I mean, as far as landscaping, we are increasing the lot coverage. You know, this is an existing
Yep.
non-conforming lot, so, you know, and-
Be of asphalt, absolutely.
It's, uh, no, actually, it's going to be, um-
No, but now.
Yeah, and, and seasonal, twelve seats will not, you know, it's, it's not, uh, out of the, it's not excessive in that area, I believe, so.
So, so just for the file, I just have a question on that. So on the, on the, um, the plan that we have in our file, we may not have an updated one, so our plan shows forty, the, um, the forty-four seats inside and then the additional twelve, but when I read-
It's, it's a forty-four aggregate, no-
When I ran the planning board, it said that they received one with the thirty-two inside, which would fit, but we just don't have that in our plan.
No, the planning board is saying you have, you're approving forty-four seats aggregate. So in the winter, in the summertime, if you have twelve feet, uh, twelve seats outdoor, you would eliminate twelve seats inside the store, the, the restaurant.
So on that, so on the planning board one, I, I think you may, it, it did reference an actual sheet, so I think you might have actually given a sheet to the planning board that just showed the thirty-two and the twelve. The only reason I bring-
Uh, I, I, I do have the old, uh, the, the original set that was submitted with the floor layout. I can look at it just to see-
I just think it might differ from ours, 'cause the issue that the planning board made up is that, is that out of forty-four into twelve-
No, no, I, I think it's an aggregate forty-four. That's, that's the, you know, so we're not, we're not asking for- Not asking for fifty-six seats. It's forty-four aggregate. So if you're using twelve in the, in the, uh, in the summertime, twelve outdoor seedings, you would have thirty-two in the, uh, inside. No more than thirty-two on the inside.
So just so you're aware, unfortunately, we haven't received an answer from Town Council, which is what I was hoping for.
I, I believe in the memo from Mr. Bott, it says that he reviewed the, with Town Council, he reviewed the agreement and they're fine with it, so.
He, he, he wrote that last time too, but there's, the problem is, and there are issues with the easement agreement, so one of the issues on the spacing, which you may want to ask for reduction, is that in the easement agreement, the four spaces close to the Brick Hogs and Dogs building side refers that those spaces have use of that building, even though they're on your site. So usually when you look at shared parking, what you're picking up is you're getting to share parking off your site. In this case, you're giving shared parking to somebody else on your site. And the timing is similar, so that could remove those four spaces, which means then you wouldn't have what's required. So I don't know what the status is of the agreement, or if anything could be amended. I don't know what your check is on that. What Town Council said on some of the other one, they based it using those spaces as part of your forty-four. When you read the easement agreement, those four of the spaces are removed, so then you come up short. Town planner did reference the reciprocal easement agreement, but he didn't reference anything about the road. Except he thought it was a paper road. It doesn't meet the definition of a paper road. And his answer was that if you have a, a street in town, if there's no, no parking signs on the street, anybody could park on the street. And I just don't know how legally that would hold up as a definition, because they're eliminating half of the avenue. They're actually changing the parking that's needed, and it's covering the entire width. So the avenue actually will be changed, that it's only one location that's passable. The other condition is being eliminated. Because it's a separate deed, the Town Planner references, he thought that was unusual, I think the owner of that property needed to get a permit in order to offer you the spaces. I don't think it has anything to do with you needing the spaces. I just don't know if he has the authority to give you spaces that may not be permitted to be used at all. So that's what I'm hoping to hear from Town Council. He just hasn't chimed in. On the spaces to the back of the property that have butted fence on the Island Queen, uh, commuter corporation, there's a dumpster that shows in your plan. It's enclosed, but that dumpster actually protrudes into two of the spaces, which I think changes the dimensions that are required on those spaces. And that can become a problem. The, um, planning board did mention that if it was seasonal, you could just remove interior spaces, but there's no enforcement for that. So if, if you leased out the property to a good business, and they decided to use the forty-four inside and the twelve outside, it's a very hard enforcement at that point. So most of the time when we look at these, we look at it as a total aggregate, but we'd like to see on the plan that the interior spaces show the thirty-two, so that when you add them up, they're all the same. The reciprocal easement also says that the eight fifteen trust, without your approval, can relocate the dumpster and parking spaces at their discretion. And that can be a problem. I, I, I don't know why the easement agreement was signed off and agreed to. before coming to both boards, so you could amend it and able to, to meet the application. But right now, if you minus the four spaces on the side that you're basically giving away, you're now short spaces for what you're asking for. And his answer for the loading zone, which you've already taken care of, because you've shown where you can have it, which is great, and you, I think that's fine.
Yeah.
But the answer from the planner was that he didn't think that was needed, because he didn't think you used deliveries for anything. But that just doesn't make sense that a, I mean, any restaurant would have to get deliveries of items. So, some of his responses are just a little unusual. They're just, they're a little unusual. He also mentioned that the bank spaces were already leased, so we had requested a copy of the leased spaces that he's using for the bank to know that the bank has at least more spaces that are shown on the plan, and we haven't received that. So, I don't know how you can get the information from an abutting property owner that you need for your project.
I, I'm not sure. I think I've done everything I can in the past, you know.
But without some of this information, there's no way to say that you meet the guidelines for what we have to go by, by the bylaw in the plan. And I honestly, I don't know why, he was okay with the reciprocal agreement. I don't know why the planners haven't brought it up. Because the easement agreement states that those other four spaces are for someone else's use now.
They're not. They're, I think, first come first. I think it might say first
Yeah, but for another property. See, usually on the, like, the shared parking, we usually always share on other property, which made sense for you to gain and back. But then you gave away parking spaces you already controlled as part of the agreement. And I just don't think that the count now meets what's needed. The dumpster would not be able to be moved just at their discretion if it's in a decision, and I don't know how you enforce that. What are the sizes of the parking spaces? How far does that dumpster now go into those spaces?
I would say about three feet.
So, so will those still meet standard?
I can extend. We have, we have, we have over twenty-four feet from the edge of the parking in, into that curb cut opening. So, I can extend the lines for two couple of feet to make it known.
Yeah, I just want to make sure you meet the standards, so you don't have any issues later on that it meets what's actually called for in the codes. The other thing is the, I went by today again just to see if something was, could be worked out. It seems that for the bank parking on that other side, which you're not using, that they're now bringing all of their access through your main parking lot, which means the other side is now going to be an exit only. So, is there, do you have anything that, again, it's another property. Is there signage or anything, so that people coming in know that that's an exit only? And where that side comes out on Main Street, it, it, it doesn't go straight. It comes narrow. So, where they've placed their parking for the bank, that may cause issues with other vehicles coming out.
Are you, are you referring to the five parking spaces to the, to the east?
On the bank side.
Yeah, but we have nothing to do with that. This is not in our agreement.
No, and I know you don't.
No, I know, but I mean, we keep bringing that, you know, like, I, I really, we have nothing to do with that property, you know. It's not in our agreement, what they do. You can, you can send a letter to the, to the, to the building commissioner if this is an enforcement issue. They can do that, you know. It's not, we're not, we're not in any position to enforce that or
So, that's what I'm saying. If, if this, if that owner had chosen to just randomly turn it into parking.
I, I can't speak for that owner.
And if it was not by permit,
Okay.
that what he is offering you for shared spaces may not be allowed.
Okay.
I just want to get that answer from town coun, and I had hoped town council would have chimed in. They just haven't gotten back to us. And if you did have to gain those spaces back without asking for a reduction, is there any way you can gain those spaces back?
I guess we have to modify the, the parking agreement, and I'm not sure. I can't speak for that.
No, I know. I just, I just, I, I, I wish the easement hadn't been, I wish the agreement hadn't been done before.
What's the other option? Ask for a reduction? Would that be through, I thought it was through the, is it through zoning board or through the planning board?
Through zoning, but we can give you a reduction. I, I'd have to read what the
I mean, we've been going back and forth. This is our fifth time probably, you know. We already missed, I, I tell you, we already missed the, the construction season.
And I understand, but, but honestly, these are the same questions I brought up day one, that no one's answered. And if I don't get an answer to them, I can't vote in favor. And I'd like to have the project there, and I think it would look good, and I think it's nice to have a restaurant down there. But if nobody answers any of the questions that are screaming red flag, I just personally can't vote for it. I mean, you might have enough other people to carry, but I just wouldn't feel comfortable with it. Because there was a court case on Cycle Ave that stated in our file. And so, at some point, the courts determined that that was a street, and it's in the street directory. And maybe that owner can go up and just get a quick permit and say, "Everything's fine. I can turn it into parking," and that would solve the whole problem. But to have a, to have a, a planner give an answer that on a street in Falmouth, it doesn't say no parking, you can do whatever you want with it, just doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, I, I can't answer this question. I, I, all the records indicate that this is a private, I mean, I can't tell you. I'm not an attorney. That the, the town planner seems to agree with it, you know.
So, the town, so the town, the town planner says it's a paper road, but the street list disagrees. So, again, if we could get town council, I don't know how to push town council with it. Or, there's, there's really been nothing, I know that the owner of the other property has submitted a letter saying, "I own it."
Yeah, that's, that's all I have.
The problem is, he's not answering the rest that makes it okay. And honestly, if he has something that isn't allowed, and he's offering you, and you're giving an easement over your property for something that isn't allowed, you'd want to know that now, just to save your own liability. The other thing you'd have to change in your easement agreement, again, is, and it was just a typo, but for some reason, the easement agreement is allowing to put an eighteen-foot dumpster on the property instead of eight. And that's just a housekeeping thing, but if that state, if the agreement says eighteen, and they show up with an eighteen, and they say, "Well, we have an agreement that allows us to do it, because your dumpster is on somebody else's property now, we can't," I don't think we can enforce. And that would take away more spaces. If they do do the clause in the easement agreement that says they can relocate or change any of these items at their discretion without your permission, it would need to be in there that they would have to be aware that because it affects your permit, they would have to notify this board. Because any of the changes they make to their parking and their layout affects your permit. And the way the agreement is written, you couldn't say no, because it gives them the sole discretion.
Any other questions from the board?
Well, I'll just second one thing that
If I could.
That Bob said, I, I don't like the fact that you, you've got a dumpster sticking out, taking up space in a couple of your parking areas. I mean, if someone's parked, it should be a dedicated access. You know, I think a lot of these things can be cured with a slight reduction in number of seats and a request for some parking room.
Anything else? Any other questions from the board?
No, I don't have any.
Does Mary have?
I don't have any. Nothing.
Oh, I, I did have one other thing. So, we don't know, we don't know the operating hours of this restaurant, right?
Exact hours?
Right. Like, we don't know if there's going to be breakfast, lunch, dinner. Are they going to be all three?
My, my understanding is going to be lunch and dinner.
So, I just, it goes to the issue of, of any of this shared parking, whether we're overlapping with other uses. So, you did say one thing that made me a little uncomfortable, which was the first come, first served.
On the four, on the four parking spaces on the side that Mr. Dugan is referring to.
The ones in the, in the back along the, um, steam, or the
The ones on the back that they have are dedicated to them, so they have
They're dedicated to you, because
But their dedicated spaces are the ones in front of the dumpster.
Because don't they, they now say Eastern Bank on them?
No, only the far side. What they've done is they've taken the, actually, I put, I mean, at some point, I had to do a chart. There's, so there's nine spaces in back that they have.
Yeah, not the ones in the back of the building, but the ones along the lot line.
Yeah, so the ones, so behind this building to the right, they have nine spaces dedicated to them. Two of them are in front of the dumpster that, that shortens the spaces.
Gotcha.
On the side of their building itself, where you'd walk in, they have, they have seven. At the back of the portion where the residences are,
Those are all there.
They have two, and then they have six for the residents, so that covers all of that.
Right.
But then the four on the side, that's the one that's the first come, first serve. It's, it's just, it's unusual that when you need parking, that you're now giving parking to somebody else. Because they basically, I mean, whether the tenants change, if we have to go by current tenants, the bait shop's open during the day. I don't know if it's open
Right, that's what I'm driving at.
The hot dog shop's open in the day, into the night.
The original ideas behind that, the shared, shared parking concept
Off hours, yeah.
was that there were alternating hours between the associated
I mean, that's why we had asked for leases of the bank, because if the bank only uses those other spaces, let's say it'll five, maybe they could grant you sharing those spaces after
Right, at four thirty, whatever banker's hours are.
I mean, the other issue you get into, but again, there's no enforcement. I, I, I only got time to go down very quickly this morning. And then I went back four or five hours later, and the same cars in the bank spaces are still there, and it says it's for customers only, nobody else. So Yeah, I mean, which is fine, but the signs say it's only for customer parking. I mean, they can't control what the business on the other side is going to do, but the business on the other side, they've got two dumpsters that will need to be emptied, and they've got a trailer and additional equipment. But again, it's, I, they can't control that. That's somebody else. I mean, maybe if you put all the dumpsters together, that's the eighteen feet. I have no idea. But I think the eighteen is a, is a typo. It's just that, it's just unfortunate. I don't know why anybody would have signed a reciprocal agreement before they had
Well, the agreement's one thing, but the, the general
Well, it is one
tightness, tightness of the arrangement.
Well, it's one thing. The problem is, the one that they submitted to us is all signed. I mean, I don't know, I don't know. It didn't say in there, "And I don't know, and you don't have to tell me," but is that agreement subject to you getting all your permits? Or have you already signed an agreement that you can't change?
I think it could be changed. I don't, if they're both agree on
Yeah, so I would, I would, I would focus on that now.
But, I mean, I'd like to get some clear directions of what we need to It seems every time I come here, there's other things that we need to do. So, I come, I change the plans, then, you know. So, what, I mean, what's the, what's the, ultimately, what's the way to do it? Is asking for a ten percent or twenty, fifteen percent reduction in parking, would that be something that would cover all the issues that we're concerned about? I mean, we know, we're in the redevelopment business. You encourage people to develop the, you know, this is why we did exactly what the book says, that you provide parking in the rear, you keep the front open space. You, you want people to be in the front of the building. That's why we have the outdoor seating. You know, you encourage, you know, and you also says we can eliminate some of the parking. And I made that argument last, last time when I was with the, with, with the planning board, that we're, there's plenty of restaurants down the street with no parking at all.
All likelihood, if you, if you
It defeats the purpose. You know, you're telling me that, you know, we encourage you to, to, to decrease your impervious area, increase your, your open space, but we don't want to give you a relief on the parking. Now, all of a sudden, the parking is the biggest issue.
I didn't say that. I said, "Why aren't you?"
No, it was the planning board. The biggest issue was the parking at the meeting. And I had to change the plans three times and go back, you know, reduce the parking, you know, and back to the same thing, you know.
The planning board should have had proof of you to show that that man has a permit to turn that back road into parking.
I really don't.
If he doesn't, and he's offering you something that he can't give you, it's a problem. If you had taken this site the way you stood and were able to set up what you wanted and got a reduction of parking and not even dealt with that other avenue and not even given an easement, that would have been the better way to go.
Originally, we wanted to lose just our site and close that at the property line. But then it triggered another issue with the butter that, you know, could be lead to another lawsuit. And we don't want to get, you know, we'll be two, three years into lawsuits and getting, you know, all you see is that maybe I saw it on Main Street. I mean, I, I don't know what to tell you, you know. We're really, you know, we're trying to do the best we can here, you know, to develop that property, you know. But either whether we, we work with the, with the, with the butter or we go to court, you know. And we said, you know, this is not going to serve anyone. It's only going to serve the lawyers probably, you know. So, you know, let's do something here, work together, come up with the, with the sharing, you know, share the parking. And I thought, you know, I thought it was a very good plan. I mean, and like, like you said, you know, we, we're not asking for any reduction. We, we have the provided, the, uh, number of, of parking spaces that we need, you know. We're providing the, the required parking spaces. Now, you know, it's a matter of tweaking the, the, the parking dimension, couple of feet to meet the nine feet or whatever. And I know you have a concern probably with, you know, with, with the dumpster, but the dumpsters, those, they could be picked up on, on, in certain hours. You can dictate that, you know. If nobody's there in the morning, you can pick up the dumpster in the morning.
I think you, I think you can work around the hours in the dumpster. I think you could condition, it's when nobody's parking there. I think the main issue is
Again, I'm not sure. I mean, maybe a simple thing is just to ask for, for the reduction in parking and call it a day, you know. I mean, we, you know, we're going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, and really, it's not serving anyone, you know. I, I mean, I, I don't know. That's my
The problem that we, the problem we get into is when the plans are submitted, we have to go what the bylaw says.
I understand.
And so, the bylaw is very specific.
I chair, I
Yeah, so you know. So, so if
I chair the zoning board of appeal in my town. I know zoning, you know, I'm not, you know, I understand what you need to do, but also
So, if the man next door just said, "This is legal here," then, then that gets rid of the, all the cases at Cycle Ave. I personally don't think he got a permit for it.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I know, but I can't, I don't know what to tell you. I mean, you know, I can't, I can't tell him, you know, I can't send him a subpoena and tell him you have to appear before the zoning board of appeal, you know. I mean, I'm not sure. Maybe this is something you can, maybe your building inspector can send him a letter and say, you know.
So, we found nothing in the town right now. Nothing's been sent to us that says that he could have taken a road,
No.
taken half of it off and turned it into dedicated parking and eliminating access. There is nothing that he has submitted. In lack of information, I would have to go on the assumption, it's not allowed.
Okay, I mean
If it's not allowed, then the spaces he's sharing with you in back, he can't share spaces with you. I agree with you. If you had done your original plan, it was just your site and you blocked everyone off, I think we could have given you a reduction in parking, and it wouldn't have been a big problem. I, I think the problem is working with the easements, the site agreement, the avenue. But without something that says this is allowed, I don't know how we can vote for something that says, that doesn't say it's allowed.
Maybe your enforcement officer can send a letter and
So, here's another, so we don't have one. So, there's our other issue. We haven't had one since April.
Anyway, all right.
So, let me just ask if there's any members of the public have any questions, comments, concerns regarding this project tonight. Seeing none, back to the board. I know we're dealing with the same couple of issues on this.
So, unfortunately, I don't know how to push them, but I think we should have gotten an answer from town council. Because I've asked these questions, and in all due respect to the applicant, they've come back and done what they could.
But I think some of the things, these things can be solved with a request for a reduction in parking.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, personally, I'd like to see more dedicated access to the dumpster. If they really have more than twenty-four feet in that aisle, I'm not sure why there isn't a little more of a landscape buffer between the, at the rear of the lot.
Wha- wh- where?
The applicant was saying that, that there's more than twenty-four feet between the end of these spaces at the rear and the...
Well, the only thing you have to watch out for there when you extend the spaces is to make sure they're not, wherever this new easement is, it has to stay outside of it. So I'm sure they have that on the plan, whatever the dimensions are, that is to make sure the parking spaces don't go into it.
But anyway, uh, but I think...
I mean, I understand...
Honest parking, so I think you're allowed to ask for fifteen percent on this size lot.
Well, goes, it goes by, um, it goes by the numbers, spaces that are needed, so...
Right. I think thirty to forty, you're allowed to ask for fifteen percent.
Yeah, see, he may not have enough. So, so, so zero to twenty spaces, they don't allow a reduction. Twenty-one to thirty spaces, they allow a ten percent. Thirty-one to forty, they allow a fifteen.
So we're not...
And then what they say is that the area preserved from the reduction, um, would then have to be planted. It can't be applied to the, the required area without cover. So he needs twenty, forty... Well, you need twenty, well, you need twenty-two, so you need twenty-two, so you could go for...
You need twenty-two or, or...
He needs twenty-two for the seating of, for the seating of the, that he has.
At the restroom.
Yeah, but there's a apartment, the apartments too.
Plus the residential...
But you have, but you have, but he already has that. So he has, so he needs, the six for the residences, I mean, that location is used fine. And then the remaining that he needs are twenty-two. And if he needs twenty-two, you can ditch two. If you give him a ten percent reduction. So...
Which perhaps leaves space for the dedicated dumpster.
I agree.
Well, what's your reduction? What are you using for, for rate on the reduction? Fifteen percent?
It's ten. It says, if, it says if you, it says if the requirement is twenty-one to thirty spaces, then you can only reduce by ten, so you'll lose two.
Three parking spaces, right?
Yeah, two, I guess.
Twenty-eight, that's two point eight, that's three parking spaces. So you need to provide twenty-five.
I mean, you've got an easement with the, with the people next door that you've signed. Tell them because you've signed an easement, you need them to prove that they're permitted to turn that area into parking. I mean, I would think you're on the other hand on that.
We're back to the same issue. It's not the easement, it's revising the easement. You're saying that easement is not valid because he can't give you the easement, so I...
It could be if he can show it. He, they just haven't. They've been asked and they haven't. They have also not given us the leases. It says that we do shared parking. We need to know what the other parking is used for, and they, they won't give us the leases for the spaces they've leased to the bank because it says we have to look at that, that too. So I, I don't know why they're not doing it. I don't know if it's because they're just lax, or they don't wanna do it, or they know there's a problem. But that cycle lab is a problem. I don't know, I don't know how you get around it without them giving you the information. I don't know what else you could do.
Oh, okay. I think I gotta go back and talk to my client. Maybe there's some other things to do. Maybe, like you said, we ask for a reduction and try to reduce the required number, you know? I don't know, if we have to reduce the seats, might have to reduce the seats, and then not to...
I mean, I personally...
Get into that whole idea, and then the four parking spaces won't be shared, you know, to the side. So that agreement won't be, will be null, so...
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I, I wouldn't have a problem giving a reduction. I think that's, you're jumping through hoops, I think. Reduction's fine.
Right, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a problem with a reduction.
Me neither, obviously.
Yeah, I mean, it really was trying to...
I think you're on the right track, uh, trying to...
And maybe, I mean, maybe Noreen could send a, another email to town council, just saying that we had expected it for this hearing, because they were coming back.
And then I'll wait, if I hear from town council, see what the, you know, if this is fine with the agreement, then we can probably tweak the agreement just to, with, you know, maybe ask for, still ask for the reduction or change the agreement to take the four parking spaces out of the agreement, the one on the side. You know, and not, if not, we'll come back, you know, but...
Alright, so we're looking for another date then?
Sorry.
What's the next date we, uh...
Would be twelve five?
That's it, right? The fifth? Well, that's the soonest, right? I mean, we might as well try to do sooner than later. Alright, then I make a motion to continue to twelve five.
Second.
Uh, twelve five, I, I, I have another meeting on twelve five.
What's the next?
You wanna try and do it on November twenty-first?
If the information can be done, I just don't wanna cut them short again either. If they can't get it, why come all the way back in again?
Because I, our December schedule's not in cement yet, so we're trying to give you guys the holiday off.
We're gonna take it off whether you give it to us or not.
We appreciate that, Noreen.
We're trying.
So if we don't do the...
I mean, we could do it, we could continue to the twenty-first, and you either got it or...
Right, and if we feel like we need to continue, I'll just send the request by, so we don't have to come here. We will hear something from the town, from town council by, before that. Meanwhile, we might wanna look at some options too, see what, you know? Unfortunately, this is the fourth, fifth time that we changed the design, you know, so, but...
Got stuck between two boards.
Alright, so does anyone wanna make the motion?
So I'll make a motion then to continue to the twenty-first.
I'll second it. Alright, so the motion was made by Bob and seconded by Ed. All those in favor?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Two seconds.
Alright. Oh, we have our open meeting items, and looking at the time, we're coming up against nine thirty. Does anyone want to...
I'm happy to move that we continue and, that we go until ten.
Fantastic.
If we get done earlier, great.
Second. Alright, so now that Bob's back, I think, uh, Ken was making the motion to extend past nine thirty.
How exciting.
Alright, so...
Up to ten.
Up to ten. So that was Ken, and seconded by Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so we have the minutes of October third and October seventeenth. Has everyone had a ch, well, we'll take it one by one. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from October third?
Yes, I did.
Yes.
And would anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to accept the minutes. Written, October third, two thousand nineteen, nineteen minutes meeting.
And there's a second by Mary, so, uh, motion was made by Ed, seconded by Mary. All those in favor?
Aye.
I have not reviewed the seventeenth.
I don't think we've seen it, no.
So we can take that off?
We'll put that on, we'll, we'll table that.
Good thing I didn't vote for it.
Yeah. Alright, so up next we have discussion, draft, decision with possible vote for application twenty dash nineteen. MEWAD zero and two thirteen, North Falmouth Highway in North Falmouth. This is a comprehensive permit that we've been dealing with. Has everyone had a chance to review the decision?
Uh, a little bit, but we'll probably go over it, but should we wait till, um, Noreen's there?
We should, we should. That'll give us time to look it over.
Hey, should we review? Did you wanna do condition by condition?
Uh, sure, we can do that.
Assuming once we approve all the conditions, then we can approve of the...
Um, for the findings, are we doing anything on the findings?
Was there anything you wanted to...
Yeah.
Anything in the findings or anything, Mary?
I just wanted something that wasn't really major. On page six, when it talks about, um, the letter from Turkington...
Which number?
Seven.
Seven, yeah.
And at, at the top of page six, I think at the end of that, it would be nice to say that the letter recommended that it appeared to be a good demonstration project for that, um, denitrification enhancement.
Okay, everyone's okay with that?
Yeah, that should be fine.
Alright. Anything else, Mary?
No.
Alright, good. So we'll move on to the conditions, starting on page seven. And it's supposed to go one by one, or...
Do you want me to read each one?
Sure, if you want to.
So condition one, uh, where this comprehensive permit is made specifically under master under laws, chapter forty B, section twenty to twenty-three, allowing the override of local zoning density, there shall be no as of right changes made to the subject property. Any changes requested shall be properly submitted to the zoning board of appeals as provided for under master under laws, chapter forty B.
Fairly standard language that we include, and everyone's all set with those?
Yeah. Should we vote on each one?
Can I ask, should we, we vote in favor?
If you want, I mean, that way you'll get those done.
Sure. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Condition two, the construction shall be substantially, as shown on the plan submitted and reviewed by the board as follows. Existing conditions, plan sheet one of six for two thirteen in lot one A, North Falmouth Highway, prepared for Wild Harbor Condominium LLC in Falmouth, drawn by Falmouth Engineering, dated March fourth, twenty nineteen. Site plan west, sheet two of six, dated March fourth, twenty nineteen. Site plan east, sheet three of six, dated March fourth, twenty nineteen. Plan and profile, sheet four of six, dated March fourth, twenty nineteen. Septic details, sheet five of six, dated March fourth, twenty nineteen. And standard details and leaching field details, sheet six of six, dated March fourth, twenty nineteen. All plans were stamped and signed by Michael J. Porcelli, P.E. Concept plan for number two thirteen in lot one A, North Falmouth Highway, prepared for Maroni Realty LLC in Falmouth, sheet two of X, dated November first, twenty eighteen. Overall site plan, prepared for two thirteen in lot one A, North Falmouth Highway, Falmouth, Mass., Wild Harbor Condominium LLC, sheet L one, dated July first, twenty nineteen, as drawn by Hawk Design Inc., Landscape Architects, Sagamore, Mass. Existing conditions, plan, sheet one of six for two thirteen in lot one A, North Falmouth Highway, prepared for Wild Harbor Condominium LLC in Falmouth, drawn by Falmouth Engineering, dated March fourth, twenty nineteen. Site plan west, sheet two of six, dated March fourth, twenty nineteen, with a revision date of July first, twenty nineteen. Site plan east, sheet three of six, dated March fourth, twenty nineteen, with a revision date of July first, twenty nineteen. Plan and profile, sheet four of six, dated March fourth, twenty nineteen, with a revision date of July first, twenty nineteen. Septic details, sheet five of six, dated March fourth, twenty nineteen. And standard details and leaching field details, sheet six of six, dated March fourth, twenty nineteen, with a revision date of July first, twenty nineteen. All plans were signed by Michael J. Porcelli, P.E. Site plan west, profile of wall behind building number two for two thirteen in lot one A, North Falmouth Highway, prepared for Wild Harbor Condominium LLC in Falmouth, as drawn by Falmouth Engineering, sheet two of six, dated March fourth, twenty nineteen, with the final revision date of August thirteenth, twenty nineteen. Site plan east, profile of wall behind building number five, sheet three of six, dated March fourth, twenty nineteen, with the final revision date of August thirteenth, twenty nineteen. And front elevation, side elevations, and first floor layout, and second floor layout, and foundation plan, prepared for Maroni Realty, Falmouth Duplex Units, as drawn by Bruce Devlin Designs, not dated. So my only question on that is where that one's not dated. Is that the one that did the change on the second floor? But that one has that change on the second floor. Remember where they exchanged the law? So that's it for condition number two.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Condition three, applicant has stated that the twenty-two foot wide driveway will be designed to meet town standards with the possibility of the town accepting the road in the future. Falmouth Engineering requires installation of appropriate drainage measures during construction. The roadway shall be installed and inspected according to Falmouth Subdivision Road Protocol per Article seven, subsection three oh five dash thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty-two. Required inspections shall be scheduled through the town planner. The applicant shall install a sidewalk to one side of the drive for pedestrian access.
Do you want to determine which side you want that, that sidewalk on, or you can leave it up to the developer, it's up to you?
Well, we should probably, so maybe we should, it's the, um, well, the side where the units are on the bottom, so is that the, or the plan of, is that the east or the...
I'm thinking it's the northern side that the bus pad is going to be on. And so you may wanna have the sidewalk run to the bus stop pad.
Where's the legends? So actually, north, so what would you say, it's the southern?
Streets of view, right? Mm, yes.
Yeah, so that would be the...
Northwest.
Northwest.
No, wouldn't it be the... No, no, because it's on this side.
Well, it's on this side.
South east, right?
Yes.
I just suppose you could say the southernly side.
Southeast.
Where unit one and two, so we'd start where unit one and two is, on that side.
Across from them, or on the same side?
On the same side.
Okay, so you want it on the lower side of the drive? Because the bus pad, I think, is scheduled to be on the top side where the leaching field is.
So, so the bus pad's here.
Sidewalk. One of the side of the street.
Where's the mailboxes?
They're gonna be here.
So if they're on that side, then that's where it should be, on the northernly side, though?
Okay, so you wanna keep the sidewalk on the northernly side of the drive?
I mean, if that's where the mailboxes are, and that's where the...
That's where the seed is, where the...
All right, so that's, uh, condition three is gonna be amended to include sidewalks on the northwest.
Now, when the sidewalk gets up to the cul-de-sac, does it stop?
I would say yes.
Yeah.
What do you think?
Just so they don't have to carry it around the whole half.
Yeah, because there's too many breaks in the...
Yeah, but just so if we said the north, they'd have to keep carrying it, so it's...
So up to the cul-de-sac at building, I think it's eight?
So the first unit?
First unit.
Yeah, first unit.
Okay, so if we're all set with that?
So, condition three, as revised.
As revised. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Condition four, the town would be obliged to maintain any water main installed for this project. As such, the town necessarily seeks to have the water line installed to town standards. The applicant shall install the water main as shown on the project plans prior to any occupancy permit for the project. The applicant shall install a stop sign at the entrance of the roadway at North Falmouth Highway as approved by the DPW.
Any objections to that language? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Condition five, the water line construction shall be in accordance with the town's water department. Water department fees and requirements shall be the responsibility of the developer. Prior to the issuance of a building permits, the applicant shall conduct a hydrant flow test to determine available flow and pressure to fight a fire, and provide the results to the water superintendent and fire chief. The procedure for flushing, disinfecting, and pressure treating of the water main shall be approved by the town's water superintendent.
Any changes there?
Nope.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
The maximum height of the dwelling shall be twenty-eight feet.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Condition seven, construction hours shall be limited to seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Friday. Saturday hours shall be limited to eight AM to four PM, no Sunday or holiday hours, absent of an emergency. All construction vehicles shall remain strictly on the subject property and not park on abutting streets. Construction vehicles are prohibited from obstructing sightlines at North Falmouth Highway, or idling on or near the premises outside of construction hours. During construction, efforts shall be undertaken to minimize impacts on abutters, including securing dumpsters, stabilizing soil to guard against erosion from rain events, and ensuring that public railways are kept clean. Trees straddling the property line shall be assumed to be jointly owned, and cannot be damaged without prior written approval of both parties.
Any changes to that?
Nope.
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Condition eight, the applicant shall contact the town's police department to discuss coordination of traffic during construction. The applicant shall provide to the police, building department, and ZBA the name, phone number, and email address of the project contact individual for the duration of the construction process, to ensure that any questions or concerns, including those of abutters and residents, are timely managed.
Any changes to that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Condition nine, the development shall be limited to a maximum of eight duplex dwellings, sixteen total units, with a maximum of forty-eight bedrooms. Four of the units shall remain in perpetuity, affordable to eligible purchasers, whose annual income shall not exceed eighty percent of the area median income, as determined by the United States Department of House and Urban Development. The four affordable dwellings shall be eligible for inclusion in the town's SHI maintained by DHCD. Any increase in the number of bedrooms is a violation of the zoning bylaw and this comprehensive permit.
Okay, anything to change there?
Yes, I have an objection. Um, you know, I went out to the site today, I looked at the engineering reports, and there was concern about the ability to build this retention wall without encroaching on the adjoining property. And there's a real simple solution, which is get rid of building five. So I would propose we change eight to seven. Seven duplex buildings, fourteen total units, forty-two bedrooms, and three affordables.
Could you repeat that?
Yep.
Yeah.
If you change nine so as to read, seven duplex buildings, fourteen units, total units, with a maximum of forty-two bedrooms, three affordable, three of the units shall remain affordable in perpetuity. And we simply delete building five, there's a couple of advantages. One, we, we don't have to build so close to that lot line and risk that encroachment. The other issue is they have proposed a play area that basically falls, virtually have to trespass to get to, uh, between units, and so some of that open space could go there.
So just so that you know, if you do reduce it by one building or two units, they're still required to give you four affordable units that will reduce them to three. Because it's in multiples of four.
So you can't reduce from four to three?
You can reduce the number of units, but they'd still be required to provide four affordables.
Well, obviously, more affordable units is great.
So I just don't have the time...
I have concerns about that.
Ken, can you clarify your issue with the retaining wall? Is it the...
So I read the engineering, I looked at the engineering report, and they said they doubted that could be built without encroaching...
So that was my concern with the retaining wall, with that, that one up there?
Right. And, you know, I walked it today.
So it's, your concern is the actual building of the retaining wall?
Well, my concern is that if you place that building there, you have to do so much modification to the...
To the hillside.
To the hill slope.
Right.
Uh, you really don't have space for it.
Okay. And, and then the actual buil-, the actual building, the construction of the retaining wall, you're suggesting there'd be encroachment on the abutter?
I'm just telling you what the engineer said.
I, I was just trying to understand.
So, so if we, if we do that revised change, we would just also have to change the findings to, for the engineer's comments on that section?
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, may I be allowed to contribute to this for the purpose of discussion or to enter any new testimony into evidence?
Yes.
The economics could be drastically affected by doing that, taking away, in essence, two market rate units.
How does the board feel about Ken's proposal?
I'm in favor of Ken's proposal. I mean, I, I guess if it's an economic section, they could always appeal that one condition and see how it goes, but that one retaining wall up there, close to the other property, has always been an issue, which is why even for screening, I wanted extra screening up there, but it's, it's just very close to the line.
And a professional looked at it.
And we have, we have enough testimony to back it up. Um, it makes sense. I mean, they could always try to amend the application to another point if they could figure something else there.
Okay.
So I'd be in favor.
And Ed, you're in favor of that?
Yeah.
Mary, how do you feel?
I guess I haven't really thought about it that much, but, um...
So here on the plan, just...
I remember the retaining wall, that's for sure.
Yeah, that shows where it is, and here.
Yeah, I, I remember all of that.
Okay, so it would be...
If you want, what we can do, too, is revise this, and you can come back to it at the next meeting to vote?
Looks like we're about, that wall is five feet from the, I'm guessing, from the lot line.
It's too close.
We have trouble building it.
I mean, you couldn't even put any greenery above that anyway, five feet.
And could be as high as ten to twelve feet according to the...
It's always good to...
What's your question, Mr. President?
Well, I was just gonna say, we can revise the language if you wanna hold off on voting for this particular...
It'll reflect back in other paragraphs.
Right, but what I'm saying is, next meeting, you can look at the proposed final language and vote it then.
Okay.
Changes. I mean, it's up to you.
I mean...
I just figured if there's easier ones that you wanna vote, you can get those done.
We can vote on this mark, right?
Hey, so should we defer voting on condition nine?
Let's, let's do that and go on to...
But, but just, but still propose the change?
Right.
Excuse me, can I just ask one more question? You say that's condition nine, and the draft I'm looking at says condition ten.
On our graph?
Ours is nine.
Yeah, we, I think the board, does everyone have nine on the board?
Yep.
Nine.
So, in essence, I haven't even seen this yet?
No, no, that's the same, it's just, um, there was a number that was duplicated at somewhere, so it may have, I don't... Should primarily be the same.
So it should go to ten?
Sure.
Okay, so condition ten, there should be no further division or subdivision of the premises, or the creation of additional housing units, or any other structures, without further approval of the Zoning Board of Appeals, in the form of an amendment to this decision.
Is everyone okay with that language?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eleven, each unit shall be limited to a maximum of three bedrooms. Basement space, basement space may not be used as bedroom space, nor may the second floor loft be converted to bedroom space. The loft space shall have a minimum four-foot-wide cased opening.
Is everyone all right with that?
Yep.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Condition twelve, parking to be one space inside the garage, plus one space in the individual driveway. There should be ten guest parking spaces provided. These spaces shall...
Sorry.
It says shall be, but it's just a typo. These spaces shall remain pervious, proposed to crush shell.
Why not say shall be, because they're not gonna remain?
Yeah, I don't think we need that, just say pervious.
Shall be.
So strike the proposed.
They don't exist yet.
All right, so we're...
So they'll say these spaces shall remain pervious.
No, shall be.
Oh, shall be.
Shall be, so we're striking remain. Is everyone okay with that?
Yep.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Condition thirteen, the four affordable year-round, not seasonal, family ownership units shall be included in the subsidized housing inventory, SHI, and shall be subject to the regulatory agreement, fair marketing, and income guidelines. Certification of compliance with Affordable Housing Regulation shall be submitted annually to the Zoning Board of Appeals and Falmouth Affordable Housing Designee. This certification shall include documentation that each affordable ownership unit is occupied by a qualified owner as their principal residence. Homeowners' association fees should be adjusted to reduce for the affordable units. The affordable unit shall remain affordable in perpetuity, with a use restriction recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds, copied to the Zoning Board of Appeals and Affordable Housing Designee, and shall survive sale. Any resale of an affordable unit shall be properly managed by an affordable housing specialist and reported to the ZBA and the town's Affordable Housing Designee, and include the fact that any future owner is subject to all terms and conditions listed herein.
Is everyone okay with that language?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
For discussion, we had said we were gonna maintain level condo fees, rather than charge a different amount for the affordable units. We understand that affects our sale price, but we're willing to absorb that to make it so that everybody was paying the same condo fee.
Okay, so...
Well, let me, let's, can we ask Noreen why that is? Because I, I do remember this discussion, and there was some, um, argument, which I thought was reasonable, that, you know, we didn't want it, uh, to be obvious who had the affordables and who didn't have the affordables based on that kind of information.
Yeah, I think, you know, certainly, the board can choose, um, you know, if they wanna lift, leave, leave that just to say that the homeowner association fee shall be the same. I think the only problem that has arisen in, um, for affordable homeowners is that as time goes by, and those homeowner association fees increase, they're not able to pay that increase despite the change that they've had for the purchase price. So I don't know how you specify that, but, you know, that could be, it, it could create a problem in the future. So while you could say, okay, we're gonna have everyone pay the same homeowner association fee, I guess the thought is to...
Once it decided how to increase these fees...
I assume it's the homeowner association.
Yeah, they usually do a...
Probably a vote.
On cost, or whatever their cost is.
Put a limitation on the rate of increase be included in the decision.
Is a concern going on annually, or, or say down the road on the resale?
Well, so what, what they found is that while the homeowners, so while it's a boon to homeowners to pay less initially to get, you know, for their unit in total, and then to pay the market rate for the homeowner association, as time goes by, those homeowners still have that limited income, but that the cost for the homeowner association can increase, at which point in time they are not able to make those increases. So, kind of the question then comes up about how do you keep those units as affordable for those homeowners? Because they can't, there's no way to anticipate for the future what their costs are gonna be.
Certainly a valid argument. Uh, I, I see your point, but I think it would be more impactful on our owners if we had amenities that had major fluctuations to it. Here, we're dealing with, um, snow plowing, common area insurance, septic maintenance, and lawn maintenance.
So what about exterior buildings?
Well, we'd be reserving for that, certainly.
But is that part of the homeowners' association?
We, there're gonna be, there're gonna be vinyl siding and low-maintenance exteriors, and thirty-year minimum roofs. And we will be having reserves for, uh, replacement of, of those elements, as well as a separate replacement reserve for the septic system and for operating. But it'll all be in the initial budget, and any increases will be incremental to, well, the, the reserves should be good for the useful life of the siding, roofing, and pavement, which is what we'd be reserving for, exterior lights.
I guess so, how does the, how are you building the reserve? I guess so, how does the, how are you building the reserve? Is it start with the first payments of the association, or is the developer actually starting the reserve with a balance?
No, it starts with the first payment. It, well, actually, what we, what we typically do is we collect three months upfront, those three months go into reserve account, in case they don't pay and we have to chase them for the money.
So on the units that are affordable, you'd be collecting three months of fees in advance?
At the closing. That's how we typically do it, and in addition to that, each monthly fee will be broken down, we, 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 we design a replacement plan, what's the estimated useful life of the road, the exterior lights, the roofs on the building, and so on, things that would need to be replaced. We break that down over the, the useful life period, thirty years, forty years, whatever that is, divided by the number of units, and set our reserve budget based on that number. So, I mean, it, it sounds like a lot of money, but it could be fifteen dollars a month per unit for forty years.
So sometimes they do it based on square footage, but here, all the square footage of the units is the same.
Correct.
Um, and just throw out, I don't even know if you can do this, but the, the only thing I could think of is if you did it based on a percentage of what the person paid for the unit, and put that into your condo documents, it's the only thing I can think of.
I mean, I, I, for what it's worth.
I understand how they do the reserve, but I, I have a problem with an affordable unit giving their first three months in advance. I can see it monthly, but there's closing costs and things, and I don't know how the requirements are and what they have to qualify before, but usually when they qualify, they know that money is coming in. They don't necessarily qualify that out of a lump payment in advance, uh, and I think that could, that could affect the affordable units.
Man, I guess we could come back to this, and I could ask the state what kind of flexibility there is.
Let's do that.
Let's do that, cause I haven't heard the fore.
Okay, I'd, I'd like to move again that we extend by another half hour.
Second.
Motion was made by Ken, second by Bob, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, what do we have, fourteen? Okay, so fourteen, um, and again, may have to be amended if we get rid of building five, but right now it says the four affordable units shall be designated as one A, three A, five A, and eight B. Um, on the plan, so let's see, we have one A, three A. So, uh, maybe, uh, maybe we could switch five A to a different number, just in case we do that other change?
Sure.
We can vote this through, so.
Yeah.
So, one, two, three.
Make it six A or anything.
Four, five.
Yeah.
Six, yeah, let's do that, so we'll go six A.
Six A. All right, and everyone's okay with that?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye. Oh, I'm sorry, did I read that whole? I didn't read the whole, so on fourteen again, I only read the first sentence. So we'll read, the four affordable units shall be designated as one A, three A, six A, and eight B. An affordable unit must be completed per four market rate units. A certificate of occupancy for the final market rate unit may not be issued until all affordable units have been completed and granted a certificate of occupancy. All dwellings shall have the same exterior appearance and construction quality, and be in conformance with the approved plans. So, uh, item fourteen is revised.
All right, so now are we all in favor of that?
Let's see, so, does the math work here?
Still keeping four affordables, five A is changing to six A?
In case we get rid of five.
Oh, because it's fourteen.
Cause they still need to do four.
I see, because it's fourteen, I'm just.
What?
Got forty-two units, and it produced a six.
But I think they still have to do four.
One affordable unit must be.
They still have to do four, correct?
Market rate.
No matter what, so that covers the four.
You okay on the math there, Ken?
Well, I mean, it, it works out to be. Uh, like, three and a half market rate units, you know what I mean?
Hmm.
Um. I'm not sure if there's a way to express that, that's, you know.
So why do we?
For, for, after the, af, you know, one market rate unit should be constructed after the first, uh, one affordable unit should be constructed after the first three market rates, or something like that.
So what we could do is?
Some kind of phasing described.
So we can hold fourteen?
Right.
And maybe have an option of fourteen if we get rid of building number five?
But I think it needs to be a little more.
All right, so we'll hold that for now.
Accurate.
Fifteen?
Condition fifteen, first floor master bedrooms and the first floor bathroom shall be handicapped accessible.
Everyone okay with that?
Yep.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye. Sixteen, a certified plot plan including building and lot dimensions for each structure shall match architectural plans and shall be provided to the Z B A prior to application for building permit.
Everyone okay with that?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye. Seventeen, final as builds for all structures shall be provided to the Z B A.
All those in favor?
Aye. Yep.
Aye. Eighteen, applicant shall provide a bus stop pad with bench at the base of the driveway on the northerly side, a fifty-foot by one-hundred-foot play area shall be provided at the easterly area of the premises. As shown on the plans, a mailbox station is planned at the northwest area of the lot.
Everyone's okay with that?
Yep. Well, again, on that one, I'm just wondering if, if we get rid of unit five, if it might not be a better location.
To move the play area?
To put the. Play area. You know, like, some grading would be required, but maybe not as much as if you put a whole building out there, I don't know.
The area that we have now, which is that, um, easterly, is the, is the one closest to the.
I mean, it might be possible.
Conservation space.
In this case, it might be possible to shift building six over a little, create a better access, so, maybe that's fine.
All right.
I think that's fine.
Everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Nineteen.
What did you do? I'm, I'm sorry, what did you do?
We didn't do anything.
Did you move the play area?
No, no.
Okay.
Eighteen, as drafted.
Thank you.
Nineteen, applicant shall provide a sidewalk along the northerly side of the driveway.
Everyone's fine with that?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Twenty, landscaping shall be installed as presented in accordance with the landscape plan, number two thirteen, in lot one A, North Falmouth Highway, Falmouth, Mass., Wild Harbor Condominium LLC, sheet L one, prepared by Hawk Design Inc., Sagamore, Mass., dated seven one nineteen. While plant materials maintained in good health, invasive vegetation shall be removed. Any materials substantially diseased or dead shall be removed and replaced, within two years of the final certificate of occupancy. Mature trees, particularly those proximate to lot line, should be maintained to the extent possible. Limited works will be installed and inspected prior to site disturbance.
So with respect to that last sentence, I'm wondering if there's any pros, I mean, there are some nice trees out there. If there's any process that we could specify where we might, where those might be flagged in some way.
Could we put in here that the tree warden?
That's what I was wondering.
Visit the property, to demarcate trees in areas that he felt should be.
I can check, I mean, I imagine they would probably have to do that with the developer.
Yeah, but any, any areas that are being.
Well, yes, of course. There's gonna be a lot of grading, so the chance of trees being preserved is slim, but there might, but this is such a vague, it's written in such a weak way that.
Tree process.
The likelihood is zero, as opposed to if there were some trees that it could be mutually agreed that these ones are gonna be retained.
So should we hold it and try and see if we can?
Yeah, I, I think, I think, let's see if we can't get one, a little more specific.
Noreen, can you talk to somebody?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Twenty-one, lighting shall be provided at the roadway entrance, as well as pole lights at the driveways and doors, spotlights are prohibited. Any lighting installed to a side or rear dwelling, as may be required to meet code, shall be dark sky compliant, and not shed light off the subject lot.
And everyone's fine with that?
I mean, at the end of the.
Yeah, my only question to that is, shouldn't all lighting be dark sky compliant?
Yeah. Also, at the end of.
Including the poles, the entrances, all that?
At the end of the second line, it says as may, should, shall, and shall be, I think it should be changed to shall.
Shall be provided or?
Yeah, shall be required to meet code.
As, is required?
No, should be shall, okay, it's mandatory, gotta do it.
So how do we fit in so that all the lighting should be dark sky compliant?
Just say so, I mean, you just, you just want, you know, fixture.
Well, you, yes, so, so, yeah, so just have that included with the, the poles and the entrance too.
Excuse me, for discussion, the, the purpose of the dark sky is keep our light from going off the property. The driveway lights, the, the lights along the street are clearly in the middle of our property, and shouldn't be going off the property anyway, it should not have to be dark sky. Neither should the ones on the front of the building, I can understand your point on lights on the back of the buildings that face abutting buildings, not the ones that face, uh, townland, but.
Well, I think there's concern among the abutters that they're gonna see a lot of light.
You know, North Falmouth Highway is a, a narrow road, you just don't want anything that's glaring at somebody.
That was, that was just my comments.
Yeah, the lot is not that wide to begin with.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Especially in some locations along the road, so it would seem like you'd wanna minimize your impact on the abutters.
Condition twenty-two.
Oh, I don't think we voted that, so, well, all exterior lighting, including.
Dark sky compliant.
Well, and, uh, including pole lights shall be dark sky.
I think you just put it at the very beginning, just put dark sky compliant lighting shall be.
That's what I.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. Condition twenty-two, construction shall be in accordance with all requirements of town engineering, including town's twenty nineteen soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions, and include items specifically delineated in the letter dated May twenty-third, twenty nineteen. Stormwater must be managed on-site with all uncontaminated runoff directed to recharge within the premises. No increase in stormwater runoff off-site is allowed, uh, per engineering's request, there's a date missing, is that a date that should be put in?
Yeah, I can add that in.
Prior to the site disturbance, the applicant will file a refundable construction bond in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars with the town, relative to work being done with the town's right-of-way, as shown on the site plans. Engineering shall be requested to inspect the work underway, and engineering shall recommend refunding the bond upon completion, in accordance with approved plans. Engineering sign-off is required prior to site disturbance, and the issuance of any building permit for the project. I guess my only question is, who came up with the fifteen hundred dollars, engineering?
Well, that, you know, that's an amount that I put in, um, I did send that request to engineering to double-check, so that may be something that if they have a change or whatever. So if you wanna hold on that.
So maybe hold that just to double-check the amount. Condition twenty-three, dry well shall be added to the plans, including installation plans for a two-foot diameter, two-foot deep dry well, installed in a two-foot envelope of crushed stone, connected to roof leaders fifteen feet off both rear corners of each house. Each homeowner shall be apprised of said installation to ensure maintenance and preservation of dry wells for the future, and this shall be added to the homeowner association documents.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Twenty-four, the town is specifically not waiving fees associated with construction included, but not limited to the water line, water tapping sleeve and valve, water meters, services and engineering, such as the bond for the street opening permit and building department fees. The plan involves the installation of two towns, two towns specified fire hydrants. Plan shall be submitted according to the specifications provided in the May twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen referral from Stephen Rafferty, Department of Public Works Water Superintendent. The application has stated that this is a private driveway, as such, the driveway and water main should be privately owned and maintained, oh, and, and maintenance shall be the responsibility of the condominium owners. Any required utility easement shall be in a form and manner prescribed by the town. Excuse me, uh, plans shall show, plans shall show, location of septic components and water service. Plans shall state all standards, policies, construction practices, or rules and regulations of the Falmouth Water Department shall be adhered to throughout the duration of the project. Police details shall be required and paid by the applicant, as-built drawings as specified in the May twenty-eight, twenty nineteen referral, shall be submitted to the water superintendent.
And roll, okay with that language?
Yep.
Yep.
Can we add just a little specific, police details? When are the police details required during?
Um, well, it's under my impression for this particular circumstance, that they're talking about when water main work is underway.
So maybe we can just add that in here?
Can we make that explicitly, cause this is kind of all the time, we need police.
Yeah. Yeah.
Can we change it to police details, if required, shall be paid by the applicant?
Well, I think they wanna make sure you put them in when you need them.
It said the rules and regulations of the Falmouth Water Department, so the water department, I assume, requires them.
Shall be required when work is being conducted on the water mains, or something like that.
Water mains of the street, yeah.
So everyone okay with Ken's language?
Yeah, but I think we're gonna hold that to do the change, right?
Oh. All right, so we'll hold that.
Condition twenty-five, any waiver not specifically granted herein is denied. It's an easy one.
Everyone's fine with that?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye. Twenty-six, the waiver from subdivision regulations specifically, A, bylaw, subsection three oh five, tw- dash twenty-four, D two, length of dead-end street not to exceed five hundred feet.
And everyone's fine with that?
I guess so.
All those in favor?
Aye, the waiver from subdivision regulations specifically, bylaw three oh five dash thirty, requirement for installation of sidewalks. Uh, so my question on that is, we're requiring sidewalks.
Right, so you would vote to deny that waiver if that's your choice?
Okay.
So do we need a motion for that or no?
We'll call for the vote.
We'll call, uh.
Oh, we'll just say no, right, correct, okay.
Right, all those in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Twenty-eight, the waiver from subdivision regulations specifically, bylaw three oh five dash forty, requirements for street trees to be planted on both sides of right-of-way at maximum forty-foot intervals.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Twenty-nine, the waiver from bylaw two forty dash nineteen A, where only one single-family home is allowed per lot, and I guess my only question with that is, all the other ones start with the waiver from subdivision reg, so is this not a subdivision regulation?
Correct.
So it stays as stated?
Right, so this, the, the, this waiver is requested because the bylaw requires that it just be a single-family home on this lot.
Right.
Okay.
We have to vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thirty, the waiver from bylaw two forty dash ninety-seven regarding the coastal pond overlay district and installing a Title V septic system as opposed to a denitrification system.
Okay.
I don't think the coastal pond overlay district applies here, does it?
I don't think it does either.
I thought that was determined, just a while ago.
I mean, the specific wording is five acres or more, five lots or more.
Right, and one of the.
One lot, less than five acres.
Right, one of, one of the scenarios that you run into with a forty B though, is as opposed to separate lots. You have essentially five or more dwelling units on a lot, so I would say that you have some discretion, that being said, you have testimony about the denitrification and the cost, so.
Yeah, I just don't think the specific bylaw applies, unfortunately.
Well, they're asking for a waiver anyway, so it doesn't apply.
Right, so you voted for the waiver, that's a waiver.
Vote it.
What do you think, Ken?
I don't know.
Don't know.
I'm not a lawyer, you're a lawyer. I mean, we're giving them a way. I mean, i- i- we're giving them a waiver to something that isn't relevant.
Well, they did ask for it, so.
Yeah.
Right.
So it's up to you to vote.
Couldn't we put in the findings something to the effect of, the board determines that the coastal pond overlay district by law does not apply? Rather than make it, I'm just-
I didn't think that that was, I thought it did apply.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it did apply. Yeah, I would just vote the waiver because, you know, frankly, the property does fall within that district, so I don't know how you-
It does, it does, but lots of structures get built in that district and it's, we haven't, unfortunately, since that bylaw was passed, there've been very few, if any,
Right.
five-acre subdivisions that have come in, in areas where they're within coastal pond overlay.
All right, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll abstain.
Thirty-one, the waiver from bylaw two forty dash one nineteen D one regarding street trees to be planted no further than thirty feet apart.
And everyone's okay with that?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The waiver from bylaw two forty dash one oh nine B requiring all parking areas be paved except those serving single-family residences. Uh, we are paving them, are we not?
Well, so there, there is guest parking that they're proposing to be, uh-
No, there's these guest parking. Shelves, which I like actually.
All right, so if everyone's okay, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, this says that all parking areas be paved except those, they're asking for a waiver of that? That's what they're doing? They are paving the, the houses, right, that they're just not paving the guests, isn't that what that-
It's just whether it's required or not though.
So, but are you asking for a waiver of something that you're doing anyways? It says the waiver requires that the parking spaces be paved except those serving residences, is that correct? And that's what they're putting in?
But they serve them, but they're serving.
Even though they're guest spaces?
Yes, they're still serving the single-family residences.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
All right, thirty-three?
Uh, any deviation, no matter how minor, from plans submitted and approved shall be submitted to the board for approval. Prior to implementation of said change, the zoning administrator may make a determination as to whether the changes are minor in nature and can be approved administratively, or whether they will require a hearing for an amendment. Changes made prior to an approval may be subject to a full hearing and are at the risk that the ZBA may deny the request, subjecting any unapproved construction be ordered undone.
Everyone okay with that language?
Yep.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thirty-four, the applicant is required to provide, one, a regulatory agreement and declaration of restrictive covenants for ownership project, and two, an affordable house deed rider specifying the affordable unit should remain affordable in perpetuity, and three, a declaration of trust for the homeowners association. These collective documents shall be provided to the zoning board of appeals for approval by town council prior to the issuance of any building permit and subsequently ordered, uh, recorded at the registry of deeds in Barnstable. The applicant as a limited dividend organization is limited in its profits under general laws, chapter forty B, and any excess profit shall be paid by the applicant and distributed as required by the subsidizing agency and in accordance with the applicable law, regulations, and guidelines.
Is everyone okay with all that?
Yep.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye. Thirty-five, final lottery agent, lottery plan, and marketing plan shall be submitted to the zoning board of appeals prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
And everyone's all right with that?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Wouldn't you, wouldn't you want the marketing plan? Oh, I don't know, wouldn't you want any of this prior, I mean, it does say prior, but is there like a deadline, or they just wait to?
Well, so the certificate of occupancy merely means that a house can be occupied. So what the purpose of this is, is that prior to allowing occupancy.
I guess my question is, wouldn't they have a lottery plan, marketing plan, and everything?
Yeah.
Prior to any construction versus occupancy?
No. No.
You wouldn't have it prior to a building permit?
You just wanna make sure that it's all in place prior to, yeah.
All right.
I mean, you can change that if you want, but that's-
Well, can you, I mean, I don't, I don't wanna change it, it's, it's, it's a problem, but I would just think that you would do that prior to the issuance of a building permit versus prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
So, so the building permit is to construct the building.
Correct.
The marketing plan is to find a resident for the building.
So wouldn't you wanna start that before, while construction's going on?
You know, so, so what you're saying is, you're saying it has to be done by a particular time. So he may do it well in advance of that, and that typically is the case. But you wouldn't want them to have to do that prior to getting a building permit.
Okay.
You all right, Bob?
Yep.
All right, uh, thirty-six?
Do we have to be voted, I didn't vote, I don't know. So thirty-five?
Thirty-five, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thirty-six, prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall enter into a monitoring agreement to be approved by town council. All costs associated with the monitoring should be borne by the applicant until the sale of the last affordable unit, and thereafter by the sellers of the affordable units. A copy of all financial information by the monitoring agent shall be provided to the zoning board of appeals after the initial round of sales.
Everyone's okay with that?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thirty-seven, the comprehensive permit shall be a master permit, which shall subsume all local permits and approve, and approvals normally issued by local boards other than as specifically enumerated in a condition. The Board of Health and Conservation Commission are excluded from this provision.
Everyone's okay with that language?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thirty-eight, the comprehensive permit shall not be transferred without express written approval of the zoning board of appeals.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thirty-nine, each condition in this decision shall run with the land and shall in accordance with its terms be applicable to and binding on the applicant and the applicant's successors and assigns.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Prior to starting work on the comprehensive permit, the applicant and general contractor shall hold a pre-construction meeting with the building commissioner, town engineer, and department of public works representative to review the requirements to ensure compliance with this decision.
Everyone's all right with that?
Yeah.
Do we not need to specify the? I'm just, the zoning administrator needs to be included in the discussion or no?
You know, I'm, I'm, they often reach out to me, um-
Well, right, and sometimes they don't.
I mean, we could-
Do you have an issue with it, 'cause I, I, I like, I would like you involved in it.
I'll add myself in.
So add in the zoning administrator.
So including the language to, uh, to the zoning administrator? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Forty-one, this permit shall not take effect until a copy of the decision bearing the certification of the town clerk that twenty days has elapsed after the decision has been filed in the office of the town clerk with no appeal being filed is recorded in the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds or that an appeal has been filed within such time. Any person exercising rights under a duly appealed comprehensive permit does so at risk that a court may reverse the permit and that any construction performed under the permit may be ordered undone.
Everyone's okay with that language? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Forty-two, this permit shall lapse three years from the date of which this decision is filed in the town clerk's office if a substantial use of the comprehensive permit has not sooner commenced except for good cause, as deter- as determined by the zoning board of appeals.
Everyone's fine with that? All those in favor?
Aye. Forty-three, the zoning board of appeals reserves the right to recall the applicant with such notice as the board deems proper to discuss unresolved matters or concerns.
Everyone's okay with that?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so I only have one other issue, and it doesn't have much effect if building five is eliminated, but if building five isn't eliminated, I want something in here that there's gonna be additional planting at that buffer line. Either screening or something. If it's eliminated, I don't have an issue, but if it's not eliminated, I wanna put something in.
Well, the other strategy might be to insist that the retaining wall be set back further from the property line.
Well, when I asked, when we were asked the engineering before, I think he said that's- I'm more in favor of the building being removed. But if, if there's a vote that it isn't removed, I just want something there to screen the neighbors on that side.
I think that's fair, how does everyone feel about that?
Well, I mean, if there's five feet of space.
All right.
What can you put?
I don't know, figure out something, maybe they have to move the wall, but it just-
That's what I'm saying.
They may have to.
You're in the neighbor's yard.
Well, they may have to move the wall.
Anyway, let's, let's, why don't we, we, we cross that bridge if we have to come to it.
All right.
All right, so what I can do is I can revise based on our, um, discussions tonight and that if any of the board members have additional requests, that you send them in to me and I will include those in your next draft.
So what's the, what's the next date that we have to-
About twenty-first.
So then I'd make a motion to continue to the twenty-first to-
Ed, Ed, if you should make one of the last comments, please.
Sure.
In, at the beginning of the conditions, there's, uh, they're now therefore, in, in the third line from the bottom, just says, uh-
Which page?
Uh, page seven. And what language are you concerned about? Referring to power, it refers, uh, essentially to local preference.
Which section is that in?
It's, it's the, the beginning of the conditions, the now therefore, the third line up from the bottom. Unit should be, sale of affordable units should be given to first-time home buyers that are Falmouth residents. Typically, that's a seventy percent local preference here, if we're talking four units, that would be two. Do you want two, you want seventy-five percent, or you want fifty percent?
Well, I think the state usually-
Are you, are you saying a hundred percent?
Yeah, I think the state normally weighs in on how many units the town can reserve for local preference.
It's usually seventy percent. But, but, I mean, I, just is, it's unclear here and it almost says a hundred percent.
Can we do a hundred percent? 'Cause quite honestly, we're doing these developments, I don't see why we shouldn't give preference to the people that live here.
Right, I mean, usually the, the state will tell you what your max is for, um, local preference. So you're basically just saying that whatever the state allows, you would like to reserve that as local preference.
The one thing I can tell you is if, if somebody has, somebody could have children attending to town schools and not be a resident.
Correct.
Yes.
Yep, so they would be included, yep.
Then it might be nice if they did live here, right?
I think so. So can we just leave it as first-time home buyers that are Falmouth residents?
I think Noreen's point is, it says to the extent permitted by law, so that's specified by the law.
Right.
'Cause you could ask for a hundred percent, if they won't let you, then they're gonna say no, so.
So that's fine, so whatever the max we can get.
I think it'd be nice to be specific though, if we could, if we knew what the law-
Well, do we know what it is?
So find out whatever the max.
So, so we have information that maybe it's seventy percent.
And we, and we'd like to know, 'cause we have to conduct two separate lotteries.
Yeah, okay, I will double-check on that.
And if it's not a hundred percent, I don't know if you can find it, if any state permits have ever, have ever allowed them to do a hundred percent.
Oh, I don't think it is.
I think it's seventy.
Yeah, I'll double-check.
Anything else? And one, one last comment about the taking away of two market rate units from us, I'd, I'd ask you to please think about that and uh, work with us on buffering those houses and making the retaining walls, uh, work on this, taking away two units. Certainly, you know, the result, what that's gonna do to this economically. Thank you. Thank you. All right, and we're almost to ten thirty and we do-
TJ, can you just like that, play that short clip, you know, to the left?
Yes, we got it here.
A few things.
At this time, no, it's close enough.
Need another motion?
Unfortunately.
Fifteen minutes.
What's his name again?
Fifteen minutes.
I mean, fifteen minutes.
That was made by Ken, second by Ed, I think, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fifteen more minutes. Three, board administrative review for determination of insubstantial change to seventeen dash sixteen M and eighteen dash nine McGanser Crossing LLC six seventy-six, six eighty-eight, and seven oh two, North Falmouth Highway in North Falmouth.
Just thought, 'cause I've been carrying these around for the last three years.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, they look familiar.
Little wear and tear there?
To make sure we get, if we like, make a motion for fifteen minutes.
Some of you were here, some of you weren't. Uh, good evening, Michael Glasser with McGanser Crossing LLC. Um, I, I know the hour's late, so I'll be short, so what we're asking is a extension for six months. That will give us enough time for our closing, we have all the funds, um, for the project now between the state giving us a grant of nine hundred thousand and the town six hundred and fifty thousand in our construction loan, so we have all the funds together to finally build this project. Um, it just takes a little while when you're dealing with DHCD to close a project, so uh, we just need the additional time in order to get there and to start construction of the project. And the other change is that, um, all the units will be affordable now in perpetuity. Um, so we'll have the three at eighty percent and the other seven will be at a hundred percent. So those are the main, uh, changes to the, the permit. And we'd appreciate, um, answering any questions, your, your approval back this evening. I, I do wanna just take a minute and point out some of the things that are in this project, 'cause we all worked very hard on this project and, and to make it a great project and a, and a forty B that I think would set models for other forty Bs. Unfortunately, I think some of the forty Bs that have recently been processed through and are being built don't keep the same uh, model that we put here, which is really a quality, a project, well-designed, that fits into the neighborhood. Um, a parking garage, no parking in front of the building, a lot of the, uh, current forty Bs I've seen have parking right up to the front of the buildings and we have a project co- ownership that has that, our second phase, we're taking that away. It's not a very good environment for the people and the kids that live there. Energy efficiency, um, building being built to, uh, energy star for homes requirement. And the other amenities that we put in here, car charging station, I, I, I would really think as someone who develops affordable housing and manages affordable housing and concerned about the negativism that happens on some of the current forty Bs, I think if we would have our other developers, and I know Nick, and he just left, and I'm working with him on other projects, I've had this discussion with him, that start to incorporate some of these items that we have in this project and some of the other projects we're doing, you know, the community garden is important to the people that are gonna live there and their health. So we really try to put a lot into this project based upon all of our knowledge of what people need to live in a good environment, especially people of lower income. So I would like to stress upon you when future ones come in front of you that you try to look at this as a model and try to, to ask developers to start including some of these things that we did in this project. So that's not why I came here this evening, I came to ask your approval on those two items and, um, and any other questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Glasser?
So just, uh, just to remind me, 'cause it has been a while, so you're now at five, uh, building?
Five duplex buildings, yeah, ten units. We would've liked to have a second one at twelve units, we think this is a, a great location for a little bit more density because it's on a public transit, but we're, we're past that and time to move on.
Okay, so you're down to a hundred percent affordable then?
Yes.
And, uh, with an extension of six months, uh, I know the closing date could be floating out there a little bit with-
Yeah, we're, we're hoping to do it, you know, what happens, as you all know, between Thanksgiving and Christmas, not a lot happens, so we lose that month there.
So you, so do you think six months will do it, or, 'cause if you think you need a little more time, it might be easier to do that now.
Yeah, I, I think that might be a good point, uh, so I think if we go out to eight, just to give us enough margin so we don't have to, you know, come back again and ask again, that might be-
Best case scenario, when you anticipating shovels on the ground?
Um, well, we're, we're actually gonna see if we can do a little pre-start before we, uh, close on all the funding, just so we can start clearing the property and everything. That may happen this fall, depends upon the weather, but we're probably looking, you know, after the first year, February and March, probably be realistic.
Okay, any other questions?
No, if that's all said, then I'd make a motion-
Are they gonna be for sale or market, or rental?
These are rentals, these are all rentals, yeah, two and three bedrooms with the, one of the bedrooms down on the ground floor.
Okay, that's very different, 'cause at one point they were for sale.
Market.
Yes, and we had a lot of discussion about sales prices and that they're too close and too close to the road, so when we went from twelve units down to ten, we went to rentals. And that was a change you made on the permitted number of years ago.
Yeah.
Lot of history.
Right, so did you find that the, the price you were proposing was a little steep?
Um, well, I think by the time we would've got them built, there are some things in, in the McGanser area that have been sold for new ones that are seven and eight hundred thousand dollars, so I'm not so sure we would've been that far off, but, you know, the need is, as, we know what the need is, you know, it's for smaller units, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, in this area, good school system and everything. And, um, you know, I think that we won't have any problem leasing them.
Having them all counted affordable is certainly nice.
All right, so we'll, I guess we'll take it one at a time because it's two different, uh, points, so, anyone wanna make a motion toward the insubstantial change?
So I'd make a motion that's an insubstantial change?
I'd second it. All right, motion was made by Bob and second by Ed, all those in favor?
Aye.
And as for the- And as for the extension, are we going to allow five months?
Yeah, so I'd make, I'd make a motion to allow an eight-month extension.
Second.
All right, motion was made by Bob and second by Ken, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, up next we have the board administrative approval for application one eighteen dash eighteen, Blue Flag Development LLC.
That's the one that was withdrawn, that's the one that's gonna continue to another time.
Okay.
How timely.
Well, that's right, we already covered that hours ago. Uh, board updates, uh, anything? None?
No.
Board discussion regarding, uh, article five of the warrant for town meeting, does, uh-
Okay, so-
Town meeting number one?
Oh, quickly before that, sorry to interrupt, do you want to just vote the minutes for October three?
We did.
Okay, I missed that, sorry.
No, that's okay, uh, that was made by-
Sure to record that in the minutes that we voted.
That was made by Bob and second by Ed.
So I know we've discussed this at the, um, at our open workshop, um, in prior, but the, the article has been put in by the planning board to put back in the two and a half story limitation in business redevelopment district to correct that problem we had before, but they have added an additional sentence that then makes them the special permit authority to go beyond two and a half stories. Uh, that may also take, uh, any power away from, we have to even look at it, so, uh, what I'd like the discussion on is, I, I think we should consider an amendment for town meeting floor, I think your choices are either strike the second line and just leave in the, the two and a half story limitation, or if you didn't want to strike in the second line, you would have to add the zoning board in, so it's a double check on the-
And is town meeting next week, or is it the weekend?
Next week.
It's Tuesday, and if we did vote-
With the holidays, next week, yeah.
And if we did vote on a, an amendment that we approved of, then, um, you know, TJ is the chairman, we'd probably make the amendment on town meeting floor, and then anybody could discuss it at that point.
My preference would be to take out that extra section, leave it just with the thirty-five feet, two and a half stories, period.
Well, the first thing is, it's, 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 it's good that they're clarifying it.
And then if we do take it out-